For local sighting approval. The waste transfer station in the city of Moline. My name is Dennis Walsh, appointed by the mayor and city council as the hearing officer. The purposes of this hearing which involve the sighting process of pollution control facility, which in this case is the transfer station. I'm a local governmental attorney and environmental law attorney, and I'll be serving as hearing officer for the hearing on the application filed by Lake Shore Recycling Systems LLC. To my right and behind me is the court reporter who will be taking down everything set at this hearing. At the tables in front of me are people and any of these churches and parties. I'll introduce them in a minute. But first, some background. On March 3rd, 2023, Lake Shore Recycling Systems LLC filed an application for local sighting approval for the proposed Moline Transfer Station. The transfer station is supposed to be located in approximately 10 acres of property within the corporate limits in the city of Moline. On the website of 47th Street, just north of 78th Avenue. The transfer station is a pollution control facility as defined by the Environmental Protection Act. Whether a pollution control facility can be cited and operated is determined by the process set forth in section 39.22 of that act. The process involves notice to various parties, the filing of the application with the city, an examination period, and then this hearing on the application filed by public comment. Once all of that is completed, then the city council must determine if the proposed facility meets the state of Illinois criteria set forth in the Environmental Protection Act. There's nine criteria set forth in section 39.22A of the act that local governmental authorities such as the city of Moline must consider in determining whether to grant sighting approval. And it is those nine criteria that we focus on during the course of this public hearing. The nine criteria are as follows, and not all of them may be applicable to this site. And it's not uncommon for the applicant representing his case to jump from one to the other depending on timing and witness availability. You do not necessarily have to go in the order of criteria one to nine during this hearing, and I don't expect we will. The nine criteria are as follows. Number one, the facility is necessary to accommodate the waste needs of the area it is intended to serve. Number two, the facility is so designed, located, and proposed to be operated that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. Number three, the facility is located so as to minimize incompatibility with the character of the surrounding area and to minimize the effect on the value of the surrounding property. Number four, the facility is located outside the boundary of 100-year foot plane. Number five, the plan of operation for the facility is designed to minimize the danger to surrounding area from fire, spills, and other operational accidents. Number six, the traffic patterns to and from the facility are so designed as to minimize the impact on existing traffic flows. Number seven, if the facility will be treating, storing, or disposing of hazardous waste, an emergency response plan exists for the facility which includes notification, containment, and excavation procedures to be used in the case of accidental release. Number eight, if the facility is to be located in a county where the county board has adopted a solid waste management plan existing with the planning requirements in the local Solid Waste Disposal Act or the Solid Waste Planning and Recycling Act, the facility is consistent with that plan. Number nine, if the facility is located within a regulated recharge area, any applicable requirements specified by the pollution control board for such areas has been met. Those are the nine criteria. Section 39A of the act also provides that the city may consider as evidence the previous operating experience and past record of convictions or admissions of violations by the applicant and any subsidiary or current corporation in the field of solid waste management when considering criteria two and criteria five. The law provides that the local sighting approval must be granted by the city if the proposed transfer station meets all the criteria that are applicable to it. And it must be denied if the proposed facility fails to meet all the criteria that are applicable to it. In this case, the applicant through its application requests approval to cite and operate a transfer station that will process up to 520 tons of non-hazardous material per day, which includes up to 400 tons of municipal solid waste, 80 tons of hydroexcavation waste, 25 tons of source separated recyclables, and 15 tons of landscape waste. The proposed primary building has been designed to include approximately a 1,500 square foot transfer station, a 7,580 square foot maintenance facility, a 2,505 square foot office, and a 2,894 square foot parts storage room. The facility was also received to solidify and transfer up to 80 tons of hydroexcavation waste through the proposed 2,900 square foot hydroexcavation waste solidification building. The proposed development also includes ancillary facilities, including a facility scale, a citizens convenience area, and the construction of a stormwater management system, including a detention base. The application was submitted pursuant to the requirements of section 39.2 of the Environmental Protection Act and the city of Moline's sighting ordinance concerning pollution control facility citing. If local site is obtained, the facility will be developed only as approved by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency and is authorized by applicable statutes, regulations, and ordinance. The applicant has paid the filing deposit of $75,000, which will be used by the city to defray the reasonable and necessary costs of this process. The applicant provided pre-filing notice of the application and the notice of this public hearing. In accordance with the procedures and other terms and provisions of the Environmental Protection Act and the citing and the city citing ordinance, I have reviewed the application and the initial filings. The parties participating in this hearing are the applicant, represented by George Mueller to my left, Group O, represented by Brad Marshall in the middle, City of Moline staff, represented by Ann Swick on my right, and the City of Moline corporate authorities, which is the city council, represented by David Silverman, who is city next to city staff. These parties have the right to make statements, present witnesses, cross-examining witnesses, and present evidence during this hearing. All participation by those parties will be in accordance with the rules of fundamental fairness and procedure, but the rules of evidence will not be strictly applied. At the end of the presentation of all evidence, I will allow for anyone who wants to provide public comment during the course of this hearing to do so. If you are interested in making public comment, please register outside at the outside table, and you will be given that opportunity. That leads to timing. We are scheduled to be here tonight until 10:00 PM. Tomorrow, Thursday, and if needed, Friday the 30th from 9:00 to 5:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. I intend to have all oral comment heard at the conclusion of the evidence. That could be on Thursday, or it could be on Friday. The hearing is being live conclusion of evidence. I will attempt to state a day ahead of time that public comment will begin following. Oral public comment will generally be limited to five minutes per person. With respect to written public comment, everyone has the right to submit to the city clerk's office written public comment prior to the commencement of the hearing, during this hearing, and within 30 days after the date of the public hearing. Those written comments will be made part of the record, and the city council will consider any such timely written comments in its final determination considering the applicant's request. Public comment, which is not sworn and which is not subject to cross-examination of testimony, is given less weight than sworn testimony, and the evidence in the record come nevertheless important and will be considered by the city. That brings us to an important procedure aspect in this case. The city council is essentially acting as a jury, but they don't actually have to be physically present at this hearing. The elected officials can watch the live stream, they can read the transcripts, they can review the record. They don't actually have to be here for us to proceed, go forward. Mayor and the aldermen are represented by their attorney, Mr. Silverman, who is down here at this table to my right. You may see elected officials come from time to time to confer with him. He may ask questions on their behalf. While the city council members are acting like a jury, it means they are not allowed to talk to you about this matter. You may be you may be used to talking with the mayor or your alderman on matters of importance in public spaces, but you can't do it in this case. They are not allowed to talk to you because they're acting as a jury. Please understand, they are not being ruled. They are simply following the law, doing their job to that fundamentally fair process. If you would like to provide your opinion on this matter to your city council members, please do so by the use of the public comment process. Your voice can still be heard, it just needs to be done using the proper procedures. Thank you on behalf of the city council for your understanding of this. So back to the public hearing. The order of things at this hearing will first be the applicant will put on his case, one criteria at a time, at one witness at a time. The other parties will then have an opportunity to cross-examine the witness and ask questions. If Mr. Mueller feels he needs to follow up with the witnesses, he will do so. Then there will be a second round and any further questions, and when that is complete, we move on to the next part of the case that the applicant wants to put in. Once the applicant has concluded presenting his case, then the city staff can call witnesses if they wish. Then Group O will have the opportunity to call witnesses, all of which will be crossed, or can be cross-examined by the other parties. In every instance, the city council will have the opportunity to ask questions after everybody else has gone in each round so that we can get, so they can get what they need to make the decision that they need to make. That brings us the pre-testimony administrative finding of evidence. The application was filed on March 3rd. I've seen it, I've reviewed it, I've accepted it into evidence exhibit one. It's on file with the city's clerk's office. It's also available on the city's website. So that's exhibit one. Mr. Mueller, with matters or any pre-testimony matters?
There are some preliminary matters, Mr. Hearing Officer. We would ask that the affidavit of compliance with the pre-hearing notice requirements also filed last week be marked and identified as applicant's exhibit three.
So admitted.
We would also ask that the PowerPoints which were filed last week be identified and marked as applicant's exhibit three.
So admitted.
And we would lastly ask that the C B's of the five witnesses which Lake Shore intends to call be marked and identified as applicant's exhibit four. With that, we're ready for opening statement unless there are some other matters from other councils.
City staff, any preliminary matters? So you'll hear with your own decision, please.
So Walsh, thank you. I will endeavor to be brief about. This is a unique hearing in that there are multiple levels of regulation which governs this process. The level that we're at now is actually the first one, which is controlled by section 39.2 of the Environmental Protection Act. If we pass this first test, there are further levels of regulation, namely two levels of so this application and the evidence are going to be reviewed by multiple agencies and entities with the goal of making sure that the correct decision is reached. Now, there's been plenty of litigation filed how a section 39.2 hearing should operate. And what's relevant is that the city council is not quite functioning in a judicial manner and not, certainly not functioning in a legislative manner. Mr. Walsh, when you indicated that they are the jury in the case, that's absolutely true. As the jury, they are required by both statute and case law to base their decision exclusively on the facts and evidence, not on recommendations, not on opinions, not on outside information, but just on the facts that are admitted into evidence. The reason I bring that up is because a exhibit was we'll call them RITMA, I think everyone else does, which contained a finding by that agency that there was no need for this facility and that the application was not consistent with the county's solid waste management plan. Both of those are substantive criteria on which we will present evidence during this hearing. What's important to know at this time is that RITMA's finding is not actually a finding, and their act, their resolution acknowledges that fact by indicating that it is merely a recommendation to the Moline City Council. Now, city council is not obligated to abide by that recommendation, and in fact, the evidence and the law are clear that that recommendation needs to be rejected. The reasons being, first of all, that it's not RITMA's call as to whether or not the criteria have been satisfied. Their opinion is no different or better than the opinion of any other person who doesn't choose to come in and testify with testimony supported by actual facts. Secondly, the resolution that they filed last week does not reference any facts. They are all simple conclusions without reference to or support by underlying facts. That's another reason to reject any such recommendation. Lastly, and most importantly, however, you're going to hear evidence, starting with the testimony of Philip Kowalski, who is a planner with 35 years' experience in the area of need evaluation and plan consistency, who is going to tell you that RITMA's so supposed or purported finding is substantively incorrect. That if you look at the actual evidence, a different finding would result. And for that reason, I just wanted to make the city council aware at the outset that we don't put any stop, nor should they in the RITMA finding and resolution because it's unsupported by the evidence, and it also would ask the city council to abrogate its own statutory responsibility to make this decision based on the evidence. We're going to call five witnesses throughout this hearing, and they will testify as to all of the substantive criteria. Our witnesses, and we hope to get done with both of them tonight. Tonight would be Philip Kowalski, who will testify as to the need criterion, which is actually statutory criterion one, and plan consistency, which is statutory criterion nine. Maybe it's eight, it is eight. And then that testimony is going to be followed by the testimony of Devon Moose, who is, without dispute, the most experienced and qualified engineer in the state of Illinois with regard to pollution control facility citing hearings. He's done dozens of these. He's designed transfer stations. He's had them permitted. And as a result, he's going to testify about criteria two, four, five, seven, and nine. And with the hearing officer's leave, we'd like to have him be able to do that in one sitting because the testimony on all the criteria two is really quite brief. That's all I have by way of an opening statement. I appreciate everyone's attention. And I probably should introduce the Lake Shore Recycling Systems representatives who are with me here today. My immediate left is KJ Leder, who is Lake Shore's Vice President of mergers and acquisitions. And to his left is Bo Harp, who is Lake Shore's Vice President of Environmental Compliance. We think with those two individuals, we have the people from the applicant who are qualified to be here and observe and participate in these proceedings. To my right are the representatives from the aptum engineering, which comprise our witnesses, and they'll be introduced as the night goes on. That's all I have.
Mr. Marshall, may you open the Senate? Mr. Marshall, may you open the Senate?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Brett Marshall, on behalf of Group O, I'm here with Group O's CEO Kevin Kottaki. And appreciate Mr. Mueller's opening statement. I think you hit on some important points, and I'd like to focus on just a couple of them first, on the role of the city council and their roles as a juror. And I think what Mr. Mueller says is exactly right. The city council needs to focus on the facts of this case. In doing so, one of the things that jurors can do with the facts is use their common sense. When something is presented as a fact, it's not always black and white, and jurors aren't required to throw out their common sense in evaluating the evidence. And I encourage the city council members as they look at the evidence, as they consider the so-called presented, whether it makes common sense, what they're being told with regard to the facts. Oh, one example, so you're going to hear one of the benefits of this transfer station, a waste transfer station, and I think we can be honest about it. It's, I guess, waste is a kind word, right? This is a garbage facility. One of the things that you're going to hear is that by having this garbage facility come over to the industrial center over there at the airport, air park, that they're going to be the anchor tenant of this supposed new development, employing 30 people. And that putting a garbage facility there is going to attract all this new development that the city of Moline and Rock Island County has been waiting for for all of these years. Well, let's use our common sense. Group O has been there since 1974. They employ 1,200 people. They've been listed by the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce as one of the top five Latino-owned businesses in the country. As I said, they employ 1,200 people, many of them in the city of Moline. If they haven't been able to attract more business there since 1974, I don't know what Lake Shore thinks putting a garbage facility there is going to do to attract more business. That's just one example of claims that are made that are purported to be facts that the city council can ask, does that make common sense? And so as we go throughout this process, as you hear the witnesses testify and the evidence that's presented, we encourage the city council to consider, to use your common sense and ask whether or not that makes sense, practical sense. We'll hear from Mr. Kottaki or another representative or later in this hearing, and that's all I know.
Mr. Mueller, are you ready to present your first witness?
We are, uh, Kowalski, we'll call Philip.
If you thought you were going to start working, just the one you're about to give in the states.
I do.
Please keep your voice up.
Mr. Walsh would ask leave to distribute the PowerPoints at this time, because we've got to vent those. And would also ask leave to proceed with narrative style testimony rather than straight question and answer.
That's acceptable. The PowerPoint that's being submitted, which is supposed to be exhibit three?
This is nothing different here from both of us.
While we're already standing with the document, Walsh, I think we've identified all the PowerPoints that had group exhibit three.
Hearing members of the council, Mr. Walsh, members of the public participation and attention today. My name is Philip Kowalski. I am a senior planner with Aptum Environmental Infrastructure. By education, I have a bachelor's degree in physics. I have a master's in business administration with concentration in finance from the University of Chicago. I do have 35 years of service in local government on solid waste needs assessments and solid waste management plans. I've participated in needs assessments for approximately 40 solid waste facilities, and I've worked on approximately 50 solid waste management plants, principally in Illinois, but throughout the country. Today, I'm going to be presenting evidence on criterion one, which is need, and criterion eight, which is consistency with the solid waste. Criterion one, everyone has indicated whether the facility is necessary to accommodate the waste needs of the area it is intended to serve. We have a brief overview of my presentation of the two positions of these points. I can give a brief description of the overall facility, the proposed service area that can serve by this transfer station, quantities of waste generated in the service area. Service area solid waste facilities in their capacity. I'll talk about transfer station economics and the efficiencies that this facility will provide. I'll talk about competition and how this facility will enhance competition for solid waste services. Talk about the economic development, assess, and then optimize in all of these factors. Buying factor into my overall analysis in conclusion. So I'll be brief on the facility description. This 10-acre site will hold a solid waste transfer station and a collection vehicle hauling yard. The transfer station will handle up to 520 tons per day of material, including 400 tons per day of solid waste, 5 tons per day of source separated recyclables, 15 tons per day of landscape waste, and 80 tons per day of hydroexcavation waste. Service area for the transfer station includes a 50-mile radius around the transfer station property of Smalls Rock Island County. So on this slide, which is slide number six in my presentation, service area is indicated by the green line, and the location of the transfer station is shown by a green dot. This service area generally encompasses the quad cities metropolitan area. In addition to Rock Island County, the service area includes portions of Hennet County and Mercer County in Illinois, and portions of Muscatine County and Scott County.
Mr. Walsh, I'm wondering if it's possible to put the slides on the live stream.
At the same time?
You can't put them out at the same time.
Pardon me? No, they're not two separate feeds. It's just the camera feed. They can be added later.
They can be added later, but they can't be sent to the scene.
Can they hear the voice over the slides? Can they show the slides?
Yes, I'd have to stop the stream and restart the stream from this one. Two separate systems. One runs the audio room, the other runs the live stream.
We'll proceed. I presume Uh, we'll we'll proceed, I presume the city council will get copies of the hard copies of the slides that we see on the TVs here.
Yeah, well, then we'll add them to the live stream after. But then we'll be available on the high streaming app. It'll just be added after.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. So the next part of my analysis was to uh, compute the waste, the amount of waste that is disposed by the service area. To do this, I looked at uh, historic data both for the state of Illinois and the state of Iowa. In both states, landfills are wired to, works to state environmental agencies, either the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency or the Wisconsin Iowa Department of Natural Resources, how much waste each landfill uh, it sets on an annual basis. So what this graph shows is the trends over the past twenty-five years in the amount of waste uh, disposed by Illinois downstate or rural counties. So everything outside the six uh, six counties, Chicago metropolitan. That is the line shown in blue. And then the line shown in orange is uh, similar amounts, uh, similar information on the quantity of waste disposed by Iowa. This information has two benefits to my analysis. First, it allows uh, long-term historical trends uh, in waste quantities to be accounted for. And you can generally see from this graph that over time, quantities of waste disposed by Illinois rural counties or downstate counties, as well as Iowa counties uh, have generally increased. Between nineteen ninety-six and about two thousand and six, for instance, in Illinois, waste quantities grew fairly rapidly. Then with the onset of the housing crisis and the ensuing Great Recession, was a fairly steep drop off uh, in quantities of waste disposed. But after the end of the Great Recession, disposed quantities have since resumed increase. In fact, the amount of waste disposed has actually been growing faster than population. What that means is on a per capita basis, the amount of waste that each person disposes uh, on a daily basis has been growing up. Really, it's the economic factors. I mean, on airport and what's happening with occupation in other demographic. Even if you have a situation where population is flat, even declining because of those economic factors, you still see increases, which is what we do see in the amount of waste disposed. So after evaluating this uh, uh, historical data, this service area disposed of three hundred fifty-eight thousand tons of waste in the year twenty twenty-one. And over the fifty-year term of the lease for this transfer station facility, uh, the service area had disposed of twenty-three million seven hundred eighty-four thousand tons of waste. So the amount of waste disposed represents the man side of the equation, if you will. I also looked at uh, location solid waste facilities and their capacities. Uh, this represents the existing supply, if you will, of capacity meet the the demands of service areas. I think it's important to know at the outset that transfer stations such as this proposed facility not provide final disposal capacity by filling the fill. They're an intermediate facility, their purpose is to permit more efficient and effective tran- transport of waste to a disposable facility such as the landfill. Within Rock Island County, there are two existing landfills. Um, you have the Rock Island County landfill in the city of East Moline. And then the Millennium uh, Quad Cities landfill. Historically, back in the eighties and the nineties, Rock Island County actually had three landfills. So the development of this transfer station is actually a return to where things used to be, where there were three solid waste facilities serving uh, Rock Island County. The two landfills in Rock Island County on a combined basis have approximately twenty-three years of capacity. They sound like a lot initially, um, but it's important to note that the capacity is not equally distributed between the two landfills. At Upper Rock Island uh, landfill has only about eleven years of capacity. And that's not a lot of capacity, given the fact that it takes on average about nine years in the state of Illinois to develop new or replacement planning. Nine years if you're successful in getting the approval of the statements Mr. Mueller said, local signing of the protocol and the permit. So Upper Rock, relative to the time to develop new landfill capacity, is starting to run short. So without this proposed transfer station, Rock Island County could bind itself down to one solid waste facility. Just little seven years.
Please keep your voice up.
This next slide looks beyond the uh, service area and looks at regional waste flows and capacity. So the little map of Illinois, I'm on slide now, slide nine now of my presentation. The map shows, created by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, the Chicago metropolitan area, shown in orange is IEPA Region Two. Northwest Illinois shown in blue is IEPA Region One. In green is IEPA Region Three, that includes Rock Island County. And finally, in yellow is IEPA Region. What this graph shows is that over time, the amount of waste disposed in the Chicago metropolitan areas decreased dramatically. And that waste is increasing shipped to IEPA Regions One, Three, and Four. Important to note, I'm gonna come back to this point, that a solid waste plan for Rock Island County, plus for waste to be imported into the county. And in fact, this happens. The three service area that includes the two in Rock Island County, plus the landfill in Scott County, Iowa, actually imported four hundred forty-nine thousand tons of waste from outside the service area in twenty twenty-one. Which is more than the three hundred fifty-eight thousand tons that the service area disposed. So, the three existing facilities are actually importing more waste from outside the service area that is disposed by service area. To continue with the regional analysis, uh, it's also included in my report in the application. I indicated on the prior slide, the Chicago metropolitan area exports all of its waste outside the Chicago metropolitan area, or a majority of it. So what this map shows, and it's included in the application, is all the landfills that are used to manage waste from the Chicago metropolitan area. As you can see, there's a lot more landfills in this regional analysis. There are facilities in Wisconsin, facilities in Indiana, uh, facilities in Michigan, as well as Illinois, and in the waste from the Chicago metropolitan area. On a combined basis, even though this is a much larger number of landfills, there's only twelve years of remaining capacity. It's an entire regional set. Moreover, they handle nineteen million five hundred fifty-four thousand tons of waste, which is more than twenty-four times the amount of waste handled by the three service area. This is an important consideration. I looked at local capacity, Upper Rock Island County landfill, it's one of the habit capacity, it has about eleven years. The entire regional here uh, this entire regional multi-state landfill system, only twelve years of capacity. So there's a large volume of waste generally originating in the Chicago metropolitan area that's being spread out into other regions.
Of course, you, excuse me for interrupting, I don't wanna say I do your testimony, but court reports having difficulty still hearing you, cuz you're backstage there. They're about for you to stand closer to her.
Okay, here, maybe this will work better.
Or if you pointed that up and project, you know, it's very difficult for those trail lamps.
It just that, it would seem like it.
Again, it's funny to hear that, but you just, it's your back, you know, it's very difficult.
So as a uh, solid waste planner, and I I've worked with local governments for thirty-five years uh, on solid waste planning issues. I would say that prudent solid waste planning requires you to look at both local and regional factors. The Upper Rock Island County landfill has eleven years of capacity. Regional landfills have twelve years of capacity. This proposed transfer station, uh, while not providing final disposal capacity, will provide cost-effective inconvenient access to landfills. Mr. Mueller indicated uh, a resolution that was passed by RICMA. Uh, I wanna spend two slides talking about that now. Uh, RICMA convened a meeting on April twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three. Uh, it was an advisory ma- meeting to consider this application. Uh, there was that testimony given uh, during the presentation. Uh, however, the city of East Moline the day before submitted a letter to RICMA. Although it was not its intent, I think this letter actually supports the need for mobile transfer station.
Is this letter in that part of the record? Do we have a copy of the link?
Uh, yeah, the letter was submitted to the city clerk's office. I I sent it off to office.
This this letter here from East Moline?
I have copies.
I I do have the rip.
Thanks, Council.
I might add, Mr. Walsh, the letter is part of the PowerPoint presentations. Which were filed last week. When RICMA had your advisory recommendation saying that the transfer station is not consistent with the county plan, they based that recommendation uh, on there being sufficient capacity. My professional opinion, based on my previous testimony on local and regional capacity, I believe there is a need for additional capacity, including the transfer station. The city of East Moline's letter in pertinent part states, however, when considering the expansion capacity at the Upper Rock Island County landfill and the adjacent dormant landfill owned by the city of East Moline, U-Rix disposal capacity expands to eighty-five years, or the year twenty-one oh eight. So there's three things I wanna mention about this. First, Upper Rock Island County landfill and the city of Moline are contemplating an expansion of the landfill. Second, the citing application at expansion has not even been, has not even been tried. And therefore, that capacity cannot be counted. Cuz it hasn't even been cited yet, it's speculative. But third, both East Moline and the landfill contemplating an expansion of the landfill means that there's a a need, they perceive a need, as well as I do, for additional capacity to serve the service area. Otherwise, they wouldn't be expanding the landfill. And I will submit to you that the facts I'm presenting to you today are not going to change if Upper Rock Island County landfill files for an extension. Demographics are not gonna change. Number of existing solid waste facilities is not going to change. The amount of waste generated by the service area is not going to change. So all the facts that I am presenting to you today are gonna be the same facts that the Upper Rock Island County landfill, if they actually file citing application, are going to cite to prove their case, cuz they have to prove a need for their landfill expansion. So you can't have it both ways. You can't say there isn't a need for the transfer station and then come back on the same factual information, say there's a need for an expansion of the landfill. So RICMA adopted a resolution on April twenty-sixth stating that the proposed Moline transfer station is not consistent with the Rock Island County solid waste management plan. They cited the rationale, and I'll state it verbatim. Therefore, be it resolved by this board of the Rock Island County Solid Waste Management Agency that the proposed transfer station is not consistent with the plan's requirement of a need for Rock Island County due to sufficient existing landfill capacity. So here again, the city of East Moline in the Upper Rock Island County landfill are contemplating an expansion of that facility. So you can't say that there's plenty um, existing landfill capacity at the same time that you're proposing to expand the landfill. I think that both the Upper Rock Island County landfill and the city of East Moline do believe there is any traditional capacity. Furthermore, as I indicated, furthermore, as I indicated, I think RICMA's resolution is inconsistent with my testimony and the analysis that I had presented in the application. And as Mr. Mueller indicated, the RICMA resolution is only advisory and only a recommendation. The city of, the city of Moline has citing jurisdiction and makes a determination on need and plan consistency. I'm going to move from waste quantities and capacity issues to efficiencies now and benefits of the transfer station. Uh, first, I will start by saying that both the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the American Academy of Environmental Engineers have identified numerous benefits to transfer stations. Um, they provide, uh, they reduce the cost of transporting waste to a final disposal facility. They reduce wear and tear on collection vehicles. The reason they reduce wear and tear on collection vehicles is collection vehicles at a transfer station tip on a paved concrete surface and don't have to travel over gravel haul roads such as existed landfills. Um, there are other benefits. It allows collection vehicles to spend more time collecting waste from residents and businesses and less time transporting that waste to a tipping point. Uh, they provide greater flexibility uh, for communities to select disposal, final disposal sites. Um, recycling opportunities can be incorporated into the transfer station design. So for this proposed facility, there will be a citizens' convenience center for residents to drop off the recyclables. Uh, it's my understanding that those drop, recycling drop, drop-off facilities are very valued by this community. Um, so a large number of efficiency and environmental benefits to transfer stations. Next slide. To quantify some of these efficiencies, I included an analysis in my report in the citing application and quantified three principal benefits that this transfer station will provide. Local haul savings. So on average, the transfer station will reduce the distance that waste has to be transported from communities as compared to the two existing landfills in the county. There's also going to be savings in vehicle processing time. Transfer stations allow vehicles to come in and out and empty their loads quicker than they can at a landfill. Finally, this transfer station will provide access to lower cost disposal. Um, those cost savings have to be balanced against the cost to construct and operate the transfer station. And what this table shows, which is included in the application, this is slide 14 of my presentation, uh, is the net savings that the transfer station will provide to Lake Shore and other similarly situated um, private haulers. Um, and those savings will range from $16.74 per ton to $17.60 per ton. Um, those savings will vary depending upon customer and depending on hog. But this transfer station will provide important cost savings, uh, to haulers such as Lake Shore. There are other efficiencies. Because of the collection vehicles, spend more time collecting waste from residents and businesses and less time transporting waste to more distant landfill facilities, that actually means uh, haulers like Lake Shore can run a smaller collection fleet to collect the same amount of waste from a community. So as part of this application in the hauling yard proposed at this site, Lake Shore intends to develop a hauling fleet of 15 trucks. Without the transfer station, they would need 18 trucks or 20% more trucks to collect the same amount of waste. What's the benefit of this? It means fewer trucks are passing down uh, local streets, past houses or past businesses to collect their waste. As I mentioned at the outset, back in the eighties and nineties, Rock Island County had three landfills. You're now down to two. Be down to one uh, in as little as 11 years. So one of the benefits of the transfer station will be to provide a third facility for handling waste in the county, which is going to enhance competition. One way of measuring market concentration or the amount of competition in the market is through a equation called the Herfindall Hirschman Index or HHI for short. This is the method that the US Department of Justice uses to evaluate mergers and acquisitions. Lower values of the HHI indicate that there's more competition. So adding the Moline transfer station will reduce the HHI for the service area uh, by 656 points and will reduce the HHI for Rock Island County by 1,390. Again, lower values of the index indicate more competition. Um, so the Moline transfer station, because these reductions in the HHI are large, will represent a significant improvement in overall market competitiveness. By the way, I've been focusing on the transfer station because that is what the need criteria applies to. Lake Shore will also be developing a hauling yard at this facility. So really, there will be two enhancements to competition in, in the service area for transfer and disposal services and then for collection services. Next slide indicates why competition is a good thing. Every year, the Environmental Research and Education Foundation develops a nationwide survey of landfill tipping fees. Um, what this graph shows is tipping fees for different regions of the country. Um, and what I'm focused on here today is the tipping fee trends in the Midwest region, which would include Illinois and Iowa. According to this most recent survey, landfill tipping fees in the Midwest have increased by 7.7% annually from 2016 to 2022. During the same period, even with the recent spate of inflation, overall CPI, Consumer Price Index measuring overall inflation has increased by 3% annually. So landfill tipping fees, uh, as documented in the survey, have been growing at more than twice the rate of, uh, of normal inflation. Last thing I want to talk to you about is economic development. Uh, included in the application is a host agreement, a contractual agreement between the applicants uh, in the city of Moline. Pursuant to this host agreement, Lake Shore will pay $2.54 per ton to the city of Moline where each ton of waste processed through the transfer station and each ton of hydro exhumation waste, uh, processed through that component of the facility. Uh, at capacity, this will provide new revenue to the city of $349,000 per year. By the way, that host fee will escalate uh, based on the change in CPI on an annual basis, uh, not to exceed 3% per year. So uh, the escalation of that host fee will actually provide some inflation protection to the city of Moline as it pertains to that source of revenue. Facility will also pay 15 cents per ton to the airport authority, mounting to $21,000 per year, although that will not escalate annually. Over 50 years, host fees could amount to over $18 million to the city of Moline uh, in non-inflation adjusted terms. Uh, at 3% escalation, the host fee could amount to 40 million revenues over the 50-year lease term of this facility. I want to mention that the $349,000 annual host fee payments to the city of Moline would pay the cost the city currently incurs to dispose of your trash. And in fact, not all, or the full cost of your trash disposal, about half that amount would be left for the city to put towards recycling programs or other general government purposes. In addition to host fees, as I mentioned before, a recycling drop-off will be included at the transfer station. It's my understanding that solid waste agency used to have multiple drop-off sites. Uh, many, if not all, those were cut due to funding issues. So this facility will actually bring back, um, recycling drop-off facility for residents. Uh, Lake Shore will also make the site available for one-day collection events. Uh, should the city want to host a household hazardous waste collection event or a collection event for electronic waste. Um, will be a tenant for the business park. I will concede that group of employees, more people than this transfer station will. I will note that the transfer station and hauling yard will provide 31 new jobs. And through, uh, local purchases and recirculation wages will support additional 33 jobs. This will be high-paying jobs, I think, it's added to the community. So based on my 35 years of experience, analysis that I included in my report in the application and my testimony today, it is my opinion that the facility is necessary to accommodate the waste needs of the area it is intended to serve. And the basis of my opinion is that the service area disposes of large quantities of waste. These disposal quantities have been increasing at a faster rate in population. The transfer station will ensure the city, county, and the entire service area of access to additional landfills to manage their waste in the future. Uh, the transfer station will provide solid waste collection efficiencies that can reduce the number of collection vehicles traveling on local streets. Uh, this proposed transfer station will enhance competition uh, for solid waste, uh, transfer and disposal services, and the hauling yard will enhance uh, competition for solid waste collection services. Facility will generate significant host fee revenue for the city of Moline, a new source of revenue. It will have recycling drop-off opportunities for residents uh, and can serve as a site to host, uh, special one-day collection events. And it will support economic development activity in the city, including jobs and providing a tenant in, in the industrial.
Walsh, we could move right into the witness's testimony on eight, or we can stop here for cross-examination on this criterion, whatever you're planning.
Since that's a good key criterion, seemingly, so. Are you finished with the question now?
We are.
Just want to see if you have any questions for this.
We've got questions.
Mr. Murphy, do you have any questions on criteria one to the fitness?
For what we do, um, I would ask, we have a brief recess. So I can have a witness to confer with.
Okay, we'll be served for five minutes and then.
Yeah, that person, thank you.
We, you can use. Okay.
All right, back to me, like to Mr. Marshall.
Just walk, walk the hour. Good. Just, just a few questions for you. Obviously, you're paid for your services for. The use of Lake Shore, the full estate, right?
Yeah.
How many times have you represented Lake Shore in a siding? Application?
This is the first.
The first time? And. In, you represent both private individuals in, in. Public. Entities in siding applications, so for example, this instance, you might represent. Lake Shore, but in other instances, you may represent. City.
Yeah. That's correct.
Okay. About what percentage do you think your representation is? The entity that's filing the application versus, for example, the siding authority?
I would say eighty percent on behalf of the applicants.
On behalf, yeah, okay. In, in what percentage, I don't recall how many siding applications that you said. Participated in, but what percentage of those siding applications would you say that you've found? That the criteria have not been met?
Once, I once.
One, one time?
Yes.
So in all the, all the thirty-five years that you've been doing this, only once have you ever found that the criteria were not satisfied by the applicant?
Yes.
Want to talk a little bit about your data. So when you talk about the trash. Or the waste. That is produced within the service area. I think you said that you use. Historical data for the state of Illinois and the state of Iowa. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes. Why wouldn't? That's it. I can hear. Why, why wouldn't?
You don't need to mark this city, right?
Okay, we'll try this. Why wouldn't you use the actual data from the service area? To calculate what those. There's no current information available from the service area. There's no information available from the service area. In terms of disposal quantity, that's correct. Well, then, how, how does somebody, for example, like Rickma? How, how do they plan for the future in terms of what their capacity is going to be if they don't have any data? To support what the production is? They should hire me. Where do you get the data? You said it's not available. No, Rickma does not. Update their information. Generation rates or disposal rates. We're kind of getting, I was going to address this a little bit. In my next criterion. Rock Island County, along with six other counties, developed a initial solid waste management plan in nineteen ninety-one. They got grant funding from the state to do that. And in that initial nineteen ninety-one report. There was developments of waste generation rates and waste disposal rates. This particular jurisdiction, even though the plan gets updated every five years. He has since, he hasn't really made.
That's right, we have to see that. I'm really struggling now.
As it made a research effort to. Update those quantities, which is why. I did the analysis that I did. The benefits of my analysis, which I consider. Superior. Um.
Is that it draws on twenty-five years' worth of data. It's. It's accurate data because landfills were fourteen tons. Landfills are actually taxed. In both states, so that reporting tonnage data actually tends to be accurate. So I think that is. And, and I think that dataset has been accepted by same jurisdictions. The past few years, so I think it's a standard valid way of. Estimating disposal rates. For this particular service area or other stations. All right, I, I appreciate that explanation, but bottom line is you have no idea how much the service area generates. No, that's incorrect. Well, we just, you just testified that the data that you receive. Are estimates from statewide. For both Illinois and Iowa. Not from the service area. So you're speculating as to the amount of waste that the service area produces. Isn't that right?
No, I'm not speculating.
Well, you don't have the data.
The data. Is on a statewide basis. My professional opinion, it's accurate. It's used for solid waste planning. Since it's used for siding applications, that does. That twenty-five years of data is one of the most extensive databases of historical disposal information. Anyway.
You would agree with me that if we had accurate data from the service area, that that would be more beneficial?
This is accurate data and it applies to the service.
You talked about. Historically, the number of landfills with a rock island county. Can you tell me why three is better than two?
Promotes more competition. Again, we're getting, I was going to address this in the plan consistency components, but the end for. Rock Island County calls for a laissez-faire system of solid waste facility development. And. It encourages the private sector to bring forth. Applications such as for this transfer station to service. In Rock Island County and the service area.
I take it that you, you would, you would believe then that landfills, more landfills are better than fewer landfills? Is that your position?
Is it, is it, is, is a general standpoint, I would say more landfills promotes more competition. It's got, helps cities like Moline keep the costs of. Disposal down. So I would say to that extent. Orlando's is beneficial. It's not the only factor that I consider. Need, which brings in all the other factors, setting.
You also discussed Rickma and their proposal. But you referred to that as a proposal. Are you aware that they actually? Resolutions at a formal. Board meeting?
The resolution was cast at a meeting. It's invited. I was at that meeting. And there is no discussion of the merits of this application. At all. That I was the first to get up and speak and ask if anyone had any questions. From members of the, of the agency. There were no questions.
Sit down. I stand next to the.
So that was great, but it's still.
We get together. Mr. Kowalski, I've got here the minutes of the meeting of the Rock Island County Waste Management Agency from Wednesday, April sixth, twenty twenty-three. Is that the date that, that they held their board meeting regarding this?
Sounds approximately correct. I know it was at the end of April. I, I thought it was the twenty-sixth, but if it says twenty-third, that may be.
It, it is the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, and these are retained through the Rickmas website, Mr. Paul Guy would need to mark this as through boards or an internet evidence.
This could be.
No, this is, this is a separate exhibit as for rebuttal evidence.
Mr. Here, my officer. Mr. Marshall said this is rebuttal evidence. It's clearly not rebuttal, but. It is so closely related to. What they previously provided that we're going to not object.
So Mr. Kowalski, your testimony that nobody spoke at this hearing? Or offered any? Evidence? Is that, is that your testimony?
No, my testimony was that there wasn't. Sense of dissection. Of, of the facts contained in the application.
Okay, is, is a look here at the minutes. It indicates. That Mr. Max, Max, I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce it, but East Moline City Administrator distributed a letter to the board. Touched on its content. He noted Rickma was formed to take a regional approach to waste management in Rock Island County. While the former chair of Rickma was representing the city of Moline during the most recent plan update concluded in the summer of twenty twenty-two, there was no mention. Of a need for a transfer station during the update process. He also noted that the life expectancy for the upper Rock Island County landfills reported to be eleven years. Reported by the applicant to be eleven years. But that the capacity was up to eighty-five years. I think you said that in your testimony, you pointed to that as well. But also that the millennium landfill has a thirty-six years of life. And based on that, he, he concluded that the, there was no problem with capacity. Mr. Remus, Remy's with Waste Connections. Indicated that there are three existing landfills in the Quad Cities Metropolitan Market. That it's a small market compared to Chicago and that there's no need for a transfer station. Mr. Pivot from Republic Services reiterated that the reported landfill life at the upper Rock Island County landfill is eleven years. But there is up to eighty-five years of life with an expansion within property.
Is this a question?
You indicated. You indicated. That. They want to take into account the eighty-five years of additional property development. What is? What rule says that they can't take that into consideration and determine what their capacity is?
First of all, the resolution. Says existing capacity, not expansion. So that is a matter of the hand. That's what the resolution. Asked by the agency that referenced sets existing capacity. Can we bring that slide up, Mark? It's the second bullet point on slide twelve. Of my presentation. Therefore, be it resolved by this board of the Rock Island County Solid Waste Management Agency that the proposed transfer station is not consistent. With the plan's requirement of a need for Rock Island County due to sufficient. Existing landfill capacity.
And their existing landfill capacity that they. Specified in their minutes, they deem to be eleven years plus eighty-five years. That's what they refer to as the existing landfill capacity.
Well, that, that's not existing capacity.
Well, according to who?
According to me. I'll let Mr. Mueller repine on the case law. But they have not cited that capacity. It's not permitted. They haven't even filed a siding application. It's speculative.
Well, Mr. Kowalski, who do you think the people? Should trust more?
Objectively.
That, that's the same.
Mr. Kowalski. Do you think that Rickma? Has, as, as a public body. Has an interest in. Making sure that their residents are adequately taking care with regard to waste management?
Calls for him to speculate.
Can you make some question?
I, your responsibility is to develop. The solid waste management plan. To provide for the residents and businesses of Rock Island County.
So their job is to optimize their waste management plan for the benefit of the citizens of Rock Island County?
I'm not sure what optimize means. What the plan says, and we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, hopefully I can. Clarify some of this for you when I talk about criteria eight. It's for decades, this county has said that it's a laissez-faire system. Anyone can. Propose. A solid waste facility. In this county. That's what this applicant is doing. And. We're talking about criterion one is need. The fact that either East Moline. Or upper Rock Island County landfill. Went to expand that landfill. Plainly indicates that they agree that there's a need for additional capacity.
Well. Mr. Kowalski, maybe I missed, where did, where did they say that they planned the expansion?
Wait, bring up the. So we can agree on one thing. Meaning you, me, and. Upper Rock Island County landfill, that they have eleven years. Of existing capacity cited and permitted. Eighty-five years. Would be an expansion. Which they don't have citing approval for or permitting. They haven't even filed a siding application. There are no parameters that I can even evaluate whether they will have eighty-five years of capacity. But let's take it at face value. Clearly, East Moline. And upper Rock. If I take this at face value. Would want to bring in eighty-five years of additional landfill capacity in this county. Adds supports to need for the Moline transfer station.
Doesn't the fact that they haven't done it yet indicate they don't see a need for it?
No.
Well, if they, if they saw a need for an expansion. I'll take it. Why would they do it? Okay, why would they do it?
I think they're running out of time because it takes nine years to do this. What your particular reasons are for not. Uh, having a citing application as of this date. Uh, I ca- I can't speak to that. Clearly, they would like to expand the landfill potentially by eighty five years.
Um, you talked a little bit about importing waste in more than fifty percent of the waste that's disposed of, um, at the. Landfills, the two landfills in Rock Island County. Um, was imported, is that accurate?
Uh. I wouldn't characterize it as. A little more than fifty percent, it's, it's greater than fifty percent.
Greater than fifty percent is imported?
Yes.
Doesn't that indicate that there's excess capacity?
No.
Well, if there, if there was plenty of, of, if there wasn't enough capacity to cover the needs of the service area. Why would they import more than fifty percent? From other places if they were, if they were strapped for capacity?
Um. Couple of reasons, when they operate as a business. Landfills usually serve more than one county. I, I, I think Quad Cities serves. Twenty counties. That's the nature of landfill developments. Um. The fact that they. Serve multiple counties. It's just a matter of. Um. Them wanting to operate their business and provide their service to as many people as possible. So. Again, going back to my analysis, Chicago metro area has only twelve years of capacity. So irrespective of. Which facility imports from out of county or which does not. Overall, it's twelve years of capacity. It's not dissimilar from Upper Rock having eleven years of capacity, so whether we look at. Upper Rock in particular or regional landfills, we're coming up around eleven or twelve years of capacity.
So, Mr. Kowalski, couldn't? Couldn't Rickma? Prohibit importation as part of its, couldn't, couldn't it amend its master plans and prohibit importation?
Objection, calls for legal conclusion.
If Rickma amended their master plan. To restrict importation. Wouldn't that increase the capacity, the existing capacity of the land?
Objection assumes a fact not in evidence.
Well, that makes that.
The plan for Rock Island County for decades now specifically allows for importation of waste.
But they could change that.
Calls for speculation.
Sustained.
Well, I would like them to answer the question, so if they did change it, would that increase the existing capacity?
Now, the existing capacity is fixed by the design of those two landfills.
Okay, so how would adding another, padding a transfer station exist, uh, increase landfill capacity?
I testified the transfer stations do not provide final disposal capacity. So. Having a transfer station will enhance competition. But the waste process through the transfer station will go to a landfill.
So just to be clear. There's no additional capacity with the transfer station.
The transfer station provides access to a greater range of landfill facilities and therefore a greater amount of capacity.
You mentioned this part of your needs analysis, this idea of economic development. For example, a host degree, in your opinion, that, that benefit. In terms of a monetary payment to the city of Moline, it's the airport authority. Constitutes a, a, a need?
Uh, yes, in the following sense, because those host fee revenues can be used to defray the cost. Of the cities managing their, their waste. It can. Host fees are very important for promoting recycling programs, a lot of government jurisdictions rely. On host fees, uh, to support their recycling programs. So. On that basis, yes, I think the host fees do contribute to the need for this facility.
Well, they could use that money for whatever they'd wanted to, right? They wouldn't have to use it to pay for their. Waste disposal or to. Set up recycling things, they could use it for building a new park if they wanted to.
Yes.
Any commitment from the city of Moline and the airport authority that they're going to actually use that money for purposes for the waste disposal and, and management purposes that you've indicated?
Um. No, it's, it's, it's their, their, it's at their discretion on how they use their rep.
So the, the citizens of, of the city of Moline have no guarantee that the city's actually going to use those funds to make. Waste management within the city better.
I think with recycling is expensive, I think, I think one of the. Look, I, I agree the city can use it for whatever. General government purposes they want. Lots of jurisdictions in my experience use host fee revenue. To support their recycling programs and other recycling programs.
But again, they don't have.
Correct.
Can you tell us how much an individual citizen in the city of Moline will save? On their waste disposal expenses as a result of the transfer station if it goes in?
Um. Go back to the cost line. So could the sixteen or seventeen dollars per year?
Sixteen, seventeen dollars per year?
Yes.
A little over dollar a month. And how do you arrive at that?
Um. Residential households typically dispose of about one ton per year of waste.
So this is, that, that number is again based on your estimates?
It's based on twenty five years of actual tonnage data. For landfills in rural areas of Illinois as well as the state of Iowa.
Yeah, I understand you're confident in your data, but it's an estimate.
It's the most accurate estimate that exists in the state of Illinois.
Fair enough. You talked about, um, a, a little bit about. Cost savings. Um. Compared to process times and. And this wasn't in your slides, but this is the application that was submitted. In your report, you indicate that in order to. Evaluate comparative process times at landfills and transfer stations. You observe or Lake Shore personnel observed. The, uh, vehicle processing times at, at two landfills, countryside landfill and Zion landfill of Lake County Illinois. And then you compared that. Versus. Lake Shore's data providing two months of scale records for its California Avenue Transfer Station at the city of Chicago. And based on that comparison, you were able to determine that there was a, um, a processing time saves, is that accurate?
Yes.
This is on one point fifteen. Is the California Avenue Transfer Station which you compare to the landfill processing times, is that a fully enclosed facility?
Um. I don't know, I know that it operates, it's substantially higher throughput than this proposed facility will operate in.
Well, that would be important to know, right? If it was a fully enclosed facility, I mean, if you're using it to compare to what the. Transfer of the, the comparative processing times would be, wouldn't it be important to know if it was a. Closed facility or a fully enclosed facility or not?
I think the overall operation would be similar where trucks back into it to empty their boats.
Well, in a fully enclosed facility, at least what's been presented in, in your, uh, report here is that. The doors have to open first. The trucks have to drive in. The doors have to close and then the garbage can be unloaded and then once the garbage is unloaded. And the trucks are sprayed down so that there's no leakage or garbage that are attached to them, they have to wait for the doors to open back up again and for the trucks to exit. That for a fully enclosed facility because it's next to an airport. If the California Avenue Transfer Station isn't a fully enclosed facility, trucks go in. The doors always open, they dump their stuff. Uh, on the ground and they leave, it would be substantially quicker. Processing time at a not, a non-fullly enclosed facility than it would be in a fully enclosed facility, wouldn't it?
The difference would be the time it takes for the doors to open and then close, which is going to be on the order of seconds. And compared to an overall process time for that vehicle. On the order of ten minutes. Um, I, I grant you, it would be. Marginally higher. Use a fully enclosed facility where the doors are closed during the tipping. But it's not going to dramatically change the ten minute processing time.
So. On this facility, I think the site plan. I just think it's important for everybody to be clear on exactly how this thing functions. So this is. I think in your. Appendix, the application doesn't have a page number. Looks like this is in. Section six. I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, but there's, there's no page number on here, so I'm not. What, what's that? It's in section six. It's the site plan in section six.
This is supposed to take sure.
Um, you can't, K L O A. Page twenty eight, there's the focus page to it, and then if you go. Seven pages after that.
Good day, Mr. Walsh. Is it a finger number?
D five. D five. Mr. Walsh, this is in traffic report, it's not in Mr. Kowalski's. Got it? Come on, Kowalski, if you don't know, then, then that's fine. But this site plan indicates that there will be, uh, it looks like. Three waste collection vehicles processed simultaneously. Is, is, is that your, do you know how the, the process is going to work at this facility? I guess I'll ask you that question.
Uh, from a general standpoint, yes.
Okay, so, um, how, how, how big are those overhead doors that are going to be opening and closing automatically?
You mean the height of the doors?
Yeah.
No. I don't know specifically.
Okay. So. Again, assuming as we, as we've already talked about, that this is a fully enclosed facility. Which means trucks have to be all the way in, doors have to be down before they're unloaded, um, et cetera. That. The processing collector, the waste collection vehicles would have to come down, all three of them would have to line up at the same time. All three doors would open. All three of them will drive in at the same time. The doors would close, they would be unloaded and sprayed off, the doors would open, they would all back out and then the next three would come in. Right?
No.
No?
No.
But a fully enclosed facility means that the doors are closed when the trucks are unloaded. So you can't have.
The transfer station can handle. One, one truck at a time.
Oh, and it could be one. Would that be, would that further increase any of the processing time, processing times or decrease the processing times if they only allowed one truck in there at a time?
I, I, I think the differential is the time for the door to go up and the door to come down.
Walsh, you're going to present a witness that will answer these questions in detail and might be. The more appropriate person to take cross on this.
This feels. I hear you line a question right now deals with the operation, which is not a needs analysis.
Well, Mr. Walsh, I, I believe it is because he's testified that there's a cost saving in processing times.
He is, and he said, he said that the difference is minimal. So, let's move on. This line of questioning, please.
So you focused a lot on your, uh. Testimony on, uh, the competition part of the analysis as, as part of the needs analysis. Uh, is the idea here that? That you come in or Lake Shore comes in, they build this transfer station. And that allows them to accept. Waste within the service area and then to transport it to landfills outside of the service area. The idea being that then that will force the other landfills to lower their gate and tipping fees in order to. That the idea of competition?
Um, I think as a, I, I, I think that is one element.
What, what are, aside from forcing the competitors to. To lower their, their gate tipping fees, what are some other areas of competition that you're trying to take advantage of here?
This particular facility, although it doesn't come into the knee criteria, is also going to be. Uh, host to a collection vehicle yard. Fifteen trucks, so these are the trucks that would pass by homes or businesses to collect. Um, and so this overall facility will also enhance competition. For the collection aspect of. Uh, of solid waste management as well as the disposal, transfer and disposal.
But, um. I assume landfills, just like any other business, have, have costs, overhead costs and things that they have to pay for, right? That's why they charge for their shirts and so they, they can pay those things.
Yes, I'm sure landfills, they have overhead and other costs, yes.
Um, i- isn't it possible that one of the results, uh, you say this may increase competition, but is it possible that one of the results? Um, of bringing a transfer station in is that, uh. One of the competing landfills won't be able to lower its prices sufficient to cover its costs and it might cause it to go out of business?
That's what I'm saying, so that's wrong.
What would be your answer?
That is not my test.
I didn't ask if that was your testimony, I just asked you a question.
And my objection is a cost from.
Despite the circumstances, there are no facts in the records, if you keep. As a basis for, or a foundation for the question, the objection sustained.
Is it possible that as a result of bringing a transfer station in? Let me rephrase, strike my face. Yep. A transfer station comes in. A transfer station comes in. Most likely that will reduce the volume of waste processed at the other landfills, is that? Would that be fair to say?
I would say it's possible. It is not absurd to you. The the answer to your question is that the three landfills. Let me get the numbers so I can. One of the benefits of looking at 25 years of data for all landfills in Iowa Illinois is that you can really look at trends.
So the question, are you looking at something in the application? What do you mean?
Man, looking at my but the source information is contained in the application.
Is there a page?
Yes. So the page I am referring to is in appendix G that three. And it's identified as table B three dash one. Regional landfill there. So if you look at the first portion of that table, which is titled landfills located in service area. And you go over to the right, you will see that in 2021, three landfills disposed of 807,000 tons of waste. You're on the wrong table.
On the wrong table? What's table G point one point one?
No, I'm sorry, G point three dash one.
G point three dash.
Okay, got you. Okay. So the first top half of that table entitled landfills located in service area. And if you go the right, you will see throughput for the year 2021. And the total tons accepted at the three landfills in the service area is just over 807,000 tons. Okay? That amount can vary from year to year, it can vary by as much as 100 or 200,000 tons per year. Throughput of trash, Moline Transfer Station would be something on the order of 110,000 tons per year. So that falls within the range of natural variation at any given year from the throughput at the three existing landfills. Going back to your question, why do the landfills import? That means they're bringing in substantial quantities of waste, more than half their throughput from outside the service area. So you are correct, this facility will compete with the three landfills for trash generated in the service area. Is that going to dramatically impact the operation of those landfills? I don't think so because they're importing so much from outside the service area to begin with.
Yes. Mr. Kowalski, can you contextualize the H H J's numbers you cited on slide 16? In other words, is the proposed waste transfer facility service area H H I indicative of a highly concentrated waste management and disposal system, or can it be characterized some other way?
Under current conditions, absent the transfer station, it will be moderately concentrated. I think under the guidelines established by the Department of Justice, it would still be considered a moderately concentrated market, only less so.
When assessing need, what is the appropriate consideration of business layer? Specifically, maintaining monopoly versus introducing competition?
From my perspective, competition is a factor that supports the need.
And then along those lines, consideration of secondary purposes and benefits of the facility. For instance, electronic waste recycling, public recycling drop off facilities, how should that factor into the consideration of need?
I think those are capabilities that this facility will provide. I know historically, the solid waste management agency sponsored drop off facilities for recycling and due to funding challenges, we're not able to support those operations. So this particular facility will provide a drop off. For recycling, I think the residents of this, the county for sure value that type of service. And to the extent that RICMA, the county or the city of Moline wanted to sponsor a one day collection event for household hazardous waste or collection of electronics. The applicant will make this site available for that purpose. Again, those are programs that residents tend to highly value.
Thank you. One more question. How much wage do the city give to the anticipated economic development benefits of the project it has needed assessment?
That would matter to me, but I suppose that's in the city council's discretion. That is not the only factor I consider, but it is an important fact. Managing waste, you know, the city operates through their public works department, a collection fleet, those trucks are expensive. Transfer station will reduce wear and tear on those trucks. Host fee revenues earned by this can help defray disposal costs, the recycling costs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. I have one more question, but I'm not sure Mr. Kowalski's going to be pursuant to that. I think if it happens, I think it should go to the city minister, Bobitas. So the question is this. Does revenue of any kind, regardless of source, have the practical effect of decreasing costs to residents more generally? In other words, if you're increasing revenues from multiple sources, you can thereby lower costs in indices to the residents that might otherwise be covered in direct taxation of them through property tax or sales tax?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple. Mr. Kowalski, if you could put up the waste quantities slide again. You were asked a number of questions about possibly not knowing how much waste could be generated and disposed of in the service area, correct?
Yeah, I currently characterize how much is generated.
Well, I want to follow up on that a little bit. The per capita disposal rates for Iowa and Illinois are well-known numbers, correct?
Let me add, I don't know how well-known. It's the point in my researches to develop those numbers.
There are numbers that people in the industry use and rely on with their business decisions. Is that true?
I'm sure that's true.
Okay. And the population of the service area is also known, right?
Yes.
So figuring out the disposal in the service area is not much more, I don't mean to denigrate the difficulty of what you do, but it's in this case not much more complicated than multiplying population by known per capita disposal rates, correct?
I go the other way, I derive the per capita disposal rates and then multiply population.
Okay.
Now, and just to get these numbers into, so for instance, for 2021, per capita disposal rate, the Illinois side of our service area, 6.8 pounds. On the Iowa side, a little less, 5.3 pounds per person. The state of Illinois, through the Environmental Protection Agency, four or five years ago did statewide study of waste quantities. And they came up with a statewide disposal rate of about seven pounds, which is close to what I came up with, so. This is a valid accepted way to calculate disposal rates and disposal quantity. Not just for me, but for regulatory agencies and other states.
Now you were at the RICMA meeting on April 26, correct?
Yes.
And council was kind enough to give you a copy of the minutes from that meeting.
He was not so kind.
Was not that kind? Well, he was kind enough to give me a copy, and that makes him a good guy in my book. In any event, I should ask you, council, is this exhibit two for?
Exhibit four.
It's exhibit four?
Yeah.
Okay. That helps me. Now, Mr. Kowalski, when you were there, there were two representatives from other waste companies that apparently addressed the audience, correct? Or the, I should say the board, correct? And one of them was a representative of Waste Connections. Correct. And Waste Connections is a significant competitor of Lake Shore, isn't it?
Yes.
And the other representative was from Republic Services. Yes. And they are also a significant competitor of Lake Shore, isn't that correct?
Yes.
In fact, Waste Connections and Republic are the second and third largest waste companies in the United States, aren't they?
Correct, not neophytes again.
All right, but between them, they're second and third.
Yes.
And Lake Shore is considerably smaller. Yes, all right, now. Both of those individuals opined that there was no need for this transfer station, isn't that right?
Yes.
And does this surprise you that a competitor, the two competitors of Lake Shore would appear and opine that there's no need for this?
Does it surprise me? No. I think they are trying to protect their current interests in market presence and service. That, Mr. Kowalski, that's all I have.
I'll keep your manner, this is exhibit five. You're going to document, and first one is the application, two is the affidavit with the notice of the area, three is the PowerPoint, four is the CV to the experts, and this is another file. It's like, do you have any? Anything to discuss?
Mr. Walsh, are you numbering all the exhibits sequentially regardless of who submits them? Okay, then I don't have any other questions for Phil.
City staff have any questions?
Just to inform what called. So you said you were surprised that some competitors showed up and objected to the transfer station. And you speculate that's because they're trying to protect our service area. What do you think RICMA's motivation is in saying that there's no need for a transfer station?
Called for him to change the mindset of another entity.
Mr. Walsh, you speculated as to what the motives behind the competitors were showing up there. I think you can speculate as to what RICMA's motivation would be in rejecting the need for a transfer station.
Answer the question.
I think they were misinformed and they didn't give due consideration to the application. I was at that meeting. I asked if anyone had questions on the analysis contained therein, and there were none. I would suspect that the application wasn't read, unlike the city council here will be doing. It's not speculation because the representative from Rock Island County said, well, we all know this Rock Island County is losing population. So I know he didn't read my application because I addressed this in my testimony and it's specifically included in my application that disposal rates have been increasing notwithstanding decreases in population. What I think these Moline voted against the need for this facility apparently was to expand the upper Rock Island County land. As I said before, you're not going to change demographics, you're not going to change waste quantities, you're not going to change where landfills are located. So they're going to, when they come forward at some point, if they come forward, they're going to point to the same factors that I pointed to, to say, oh, there's a need for our land. I don't think there's any disagreement from at least one city, other, meaning the city of E, that there's a need for additional disposal capacity.
Mr. Kowalski, couldn't it be that they said it's not needed because they just disagree with you?
They didn't disagree with me.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
Do someone.
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Are you prepared to do, uh, criteria eight?
Um, I'm checking to see if the power point needs.
Okay. You'll take it from the moment.
Well, but criteria eight will be quick. Mr. Kowalski, if you would, um, get your criteria eight, uh, PowerPoints up and proceed with that portion of your presentation.
We do that in the criteria bridge? Okay, thank you.
This one will go faster. So criterion eight is if the facility is to be located in a county where the county board has adopted a solid waste management plan consistent with the planning requirements of the local solid waste disposal act or the solid waste planning and recycling act, so it is consistent with that plan. I'm going to go through real quick, just a summary of the process that was used to develop the plan. And I'm going to summarize the specific relevant components of the plan and how this application is consistent with the plan and then offer my opinion. So the solid waste planning and recycling act requires every county in the state of Illinois to adopt a 20-year plan for managing its waste and to update the plan on a five-year basis. As I indicated initially, Rock Island County first adopted a plan in February 1991. Uh, Rock Island County was working with six other counties. Collectively, the seven counties, uh, were the by-state, uh, regional commission. Uh, pursuant to that initial plan in 1991, the county, Rock Island County and 11 municipalities within Rock Island County formed the Rock Island County Solid Waste Management Agency or RICMA. And RICMA, uh, was charged with, um, preparing the five-year updates to the initial 1991 plan, uh, in, prepared updates in 1996, 2001, 2006, 2011, 2017, and most recently 2022. Uh, I guess now is an appropriate time to mention that the five-year plan updates um, generally didn't change any policy recommendations over that entire 25 year. So the 1991 plan, the first plan, um, included a needs assessment in an evaluation of different processes or technologies to manage waste. So there was a source reduction component, a recycling component, landscape waste composting, mixed municipal waste processing, mixed municipal waste composting, transfer stations, incineration. Uh, subsequent to 1991, which was developed as a regional effort, each of the seven counties. After that point, it's kind of pursued planning and implementation, uh, on an individual basis. So as the five-year update prepared for 1996, uh, which the slide refers to is the 1996 plan update that RICMA discussed a potential sighting of a transfer station in Rock Island County. That 1996 plan update established four basic policies as it pertains to disposal of waste, which I'm going to get to momentarily. Insofar as the 1996 plan update contemplated development of transfer stations, the Moline transfer station is consistent. Um, also with the recommendation, the disposal recommendations contained in the 1996 plan update. So the recommendation in the 1996 plan update states it is recommended the disposal system in Rock Island County remain a laissez-faire system. Any interested party shall have the opportunity to apply for citing of a regional pollution control. So so within Rock Island County, there's always been, uh, a reliance on the private sector to develop, uh, needed solid waste, uh, handling infrastructure. Since the Moline transfer station will be developed by Lake Shore Recycling Systems, a private company, uh, this proposed transfer station is consistent with the policy guidance, uh, for a laissez-faire system. Hey, back to me for a little bit. Um, the second policy option in the 1996 plan update reads as follows. All applicants requesting new or expanded regional pollution control facilities as defined in chapter 415, section 5 slash 39, Illinois revised statutes must prove the facility is necessary to accommodate solid waste needs of Rock Island County. Accommodation of the solid waste needs of any other area is not precluded, but a facility must demonstrate service to the solid waste needs of Rock Island County. So stated in my earlier testimony, the service area for the Moline transfer station includes all of Rock Island County plus, uh, some portions of four other counties within a 15-mile radius of the transfer station. And as I testified during my criteria one presentation and is, uh, supported by now, my analysis included in the application, transfer station is necessary to meet the needs of both the service area and Rock Island County uh, is a, a, a central portion of that service area. So we are consistent or the transfer station is consistent with this policy recommendation of the plan. Okay. I will attempt to summarize this. The third policy recommendation is titled, "The Role of RICMA in the Citing of Region Pollution Control Facilities in Rock Island County." This provision of the plan requires applicants for a regional pollution control facility to submit copies of the application to the member communities of RICMA in addition to, uh, the local citing jurisdiction, in this case, the city of Moline. The applicant did this. Um, this says, uh, this provision also says the RICMA board will meet to consider a recommendation concerning consistency with the plan no later than 30 days before the scheduled citing hearing by the appropriate citing body. So this goes back to the resolution from RICMA saying that there wasn't a need for this facility that we discussed extensively during. Uh, I will point out that under Illinois law, it's the citing jurisdiction that determines whether criteria has been passed. So it is the city of Moline that ultimately ready judgment about whether there is a need for this transfer station, whether it's consistent with the solid waste management plan. Um, I'll only add on to that, that RICMA's resolution is advisory and recommendations of city of Moline. Never said that they were determining need on behalf of the city. It is the city of Moline's responsibility. Uh, this third provision also said that and I will paraphrase here, when financial arrangements, meaning host agreements are discussed for pollution control facilities, uh, uh, RICMA should be included as a party in the discussion of, of such financial arrangements. So a meeting was held on July 20th, 2022 between the applicant representatives of the city of Moline. Uh, and the purpose of this meeting was to discuss, uh, the host agreement and payment of host fees. Chairman of RICMA was in attendance at that meeting. And the subject of sharing host fee revenues between the city and RICMA was discussed at that meeting. This is all reflected in the host agreement, which is included as an appendix to the application executed by the applicant in the city of Moline, which provides that the applicant has assigned right to the city if the city chooses to negotiate every, any revenue sharing agreement. So we have met this, uh, this provision of the, uh, the transfer station has met this provision of, of, of the plan. Fourth policy recommendation concerns receipt of out-of-county waste and out-of-state waste at regional pollution control facilities in Rock Island County. This provision states, and this is from the plan, currently, the receipt of out-of-county waste and out-of-state waste adequately complements the solid waste management situation in Rock Island County. Therefore, no prohibition on the receipt of out-of-county and out at regional pollution control facilities is recommended. Um, this came up in cross examination, I mean, about whether RICMA could implement a restriction on, um, out-of-county or out-of-state waste. Uh, in my view, that would be a dramatic shift decades of solid waste planning uh, uh, in policies in this county. So, um, we will accept, um, some amount of waste from outside Rock Island County. Uh, as I indicated in my earlier testimony, our survey includes portions of Mercer County and Henry County in Illinois. Um, and Muscatine, uh, Scott County in Ireland. Finally, my, uh, based on the foregoing, as well as my report contained as section eight in the application, uh, it is my professional opinion based on 35 years of experience, including helping jurisdictions develop solid waste management plans yet to propose Moline. Transfer station is consistent with the solid waste management plan adopted first by Rock Island County and is subsequently updated by. No further questions?
Do you have any questions? Do you have any criteria eight?
No questions.
March, if you have any questions, please put in that criteria.
I do. Um, Mr. Kowalski, I just want to understand, um, your interpretation of the waste management plan, RICMA's waste management. Is it your position in testimony that the plan recommends pursuit of a transfer station, of setting a transfer station in a certain area?
Um, certainly contemplated as a, uh, as, as, as a possibility. And it's a, using the counties where the plans works, this is the laissez-faire system. So this county for decades now has provided, uh, private sector companies to propose, um, disposal and or transfer, uh, infrastructure.
Well, there's nothing in, in the, in the plan, whether in the initial plan that it's adopted or the 1996 update or even the 2022 update that suggests or one of the recommendations is that, um, they pursue the signing of transfer station. That's not implied, is it?
I don't think that's specifically in, but neither do I think the county would have put such wording into their plan. It's a laissez-faire system. They are relying on the private sector to propose the infrastructure uh, that an applicant believes is necessary to, to serve the county and, and more generally, the service area.
Um, as, as a member of RICMA, would it be fair to say that all of the counties that are participants of RICMA are members of RICMA? That they believe that the recommendation from RICMA should be entitled to some weight in determining whether or not an application is consistent with the plan?
Um, I'm not, I, I, I it's an advisory role that they have, so they submit a recommendation.
Well, maybe advisory, but doesn't the plan all from the beginning, all the way through the 2020 update, isn't one of the recommendations that or requirements is that if there's a citing application for a waste control facility that that has to be submitted to RICMA for determination of whether it complies with, with the waste management plan? That's a requirement, isn't it?
It's a requirement that, uh, the application be submitted to the member community of, of RICMA.
To determine whether it's consistent with the waste management plan?
Uh, I don't believe this technically correct, but I would, uh, can we bring up that slide? No, no, go back.
So what I'm referring to is that first paragraph, which says, "Ricma shall review each citing application for consistency to the by-state regional comprehensive solid waste management plan." So as a member, all, all of these counties that are members of RICMA, cities, excuse me, cities that are members of RICMA, they voted to adopt this requirement, which indicates to me, and I would think it would indicate to you, that they believed that RICMA as an organization should be entitled to determine, at some weight at least, what, what weight we want to give to that um, is up to the city council, but should be entitled to some weight in determining whether it's consistent with, with waste management plan. Would you agree?
They have an advisory role. They actually have a, a, to this provision, they submit a recommendation to decide. So I, yes, that is correct.
And, and your position is, um, that the reason that they, uh, voted in the resolution that it's inconsistent with waste management plan is because they didn't read your report. And if they just read your report, they changed their mind. Is that, is that your testimony?
I think it's certainly information that they should have considered, yes.
How do you know they didn't consider?
They gave it in simple. Uh, representative from Rock Island County noted during his comments during the April 26th meeting as, um, I'm paraphrasing his words, "We all know this county is losing population and therefore there's not a need for this facility." Well, that's, that's factually incorrect based on the analysis contained in my report.
Again, so if they read your report, they'd agree with you, is your position. There isn't any possibility that they could disagree with your analysis and your report.
That's what he meant.
Close. Excellent question.
Um, I, I think I already testified to this. Uh, they, they can disagree. I don't think they benefited from what will now be multiple days of testimony and evidence, I mean, in other aspects of this transfer station. I, I think that is extremely problematic. I think the letter that East Moline submitted saying there was an need and contemplating the expansion of landfills located in Smolink is expressly contrary to their vote that there's not a need for this transfer station. I, it, it's, it's, it's so at odds with, uh, with the vote saying that there's not a need for this transfer station when they want to expand their own landfill. Um, yeah, I, I, I don't think it's a reasonable decision. Uh, or, or any reasonable decision underlying the RICMA vote. That's my opinion.
So, anything?
Yeah.
Can you read your question, you guys?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, we're, you said we were going to that clock. Are you prepared to go with the next criteria?
We are.
You're, you're.
Is that, I'm sorry, uh, there it is. You know. You said we only go till now.
You said we only go till nine?
We're just, well, uh, we're gonna take a break.
Subject that we visited briefly at the beginning of the recess. I've talked to counsel who has no objection. Mr. Moose going through his entire presentation on criteria two, four, five, seven, and nine. Without interruption, the reason being that two and five are weak. And four, seven, and nine, there's nothing to say other than they don't apply.
Okay, that's acceptable.
Stage name was?
Devin Boots.
Devin, what is your question?
Environmental engineer.
Did you prepare a presentation today?
Yes.
Is that presentation a summary of the contents on the relevant criteria in the citing application?
Yes.
And were you primarily responsible for the preparation of these sections of the citing application? Or at least supervising their preparation?
Yes.
With that, I just would ask you to proceed with your presentation.
A little bit about me. National Director of Solid Waste Engineering for ATUM Environmental and Infrastructure. My office is located in St. Charles, Illinois. A civil engineering degree in the University of Surrey, Rolla. Registered professional engineer in Illinois and numerous other states. Diplomate by the American Academy of Environmental Engineers. I have about four years of experience. I have been a leading engineer for over twenty transfer station proceedings. I'm for both the public and private sector. And permitted over twenty transfer stations in the state of Illinois. George discussed it briefly. This is a long process. Transfer stations because of pollution control facilities have more scrutiny than your typical industrial building. Starts with the citing. We all know how the criteria look to talk about a little bit. But if we're successful here, we'll then go to the IPA. The experts at the IPA focus more on the transfer station health, safety, and welfare issues and the internal workings of the transfer station. They're not concerned about property values and all that. That issue really handle that from a whole level. If we obtain our permit from the IPA, we still have to go through all of the building permit issues as any other industrial building has to do. That's where fire is assessed. Constructional engineering, architectural engineering, handicap exits, all of the type of stuff that's normally associated with a building like this. Construction would then be implemented. Cities through its process would work on its occupancy permit once the building is completed. But the IPA comes back again and before operation after the construction is complete to assure themselves that the facility is constructed in accordance with the IPA permit. For the health and safety related issues. So many levels with scrutiny by a lot of different people with a lot of different expertise. I don't want to beat this to depth. We know we've got nine criteria. We've talked about that. I'm going to be testifying on criterion two. Facility is designed, located, and proposed to be operated to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Criterion in four, the facility is located outside the boundary of the one hundredth floodplain. Criterion in five, plan of operations for the facility is designed to minimize danger to the surrounding area. Fire spills and other operational accidents. Criterion seven, facility will not be treating, storing, or disposing of hazardous waste. And criterion nine, facility will not be located within a regulated recharge area. Slide number five is some basic information about the site. A curious will discuss this in much greater detail on the surrounding area during a subsequent presentation. It's about ten acres in size. It's currently agricultural land use, zoned industrial. Property adjacent to it is vacant. And Case Creek, which we will talk about, life to the east. And intersects a portion of our site and flows to the north to the Rock River. Next slide. Transfer stations cannot be located anywhere. There's a series of location standards that every transfer station must meet. You can move forward on the project. They include residential setbacks, hundred year floodplains, regulated recharge. Wetland review, archeologic and historic site review, endangered species review, wild and scenic rivers review, and fine day airports. Distance from residential areas is dictated by section twenty-two point one four of the Environmental Protection Act. It does not allow a transfer station to be established within one thousand feet of the nearest property zone primarily for residential uses. Or any dwelling. This exhibit on seven and contained within the application shows that the nearest dwelling lies to the south. And is by survey distance over a thousand feet at a thousand sixty-two feet. We need that criteria. There are no wetlands within our facility boundary. There is some vegetated area in the southwest corner of our property. And we have stayed out of that area. You'll see in subsequent drawings that that area will remain undisturbed. So we meet that criteria. Flood plain on slide nine. The nearest flood plain is located north and west of our site. The base flood elevation at that location is elevation five seventy. The average parking lot elevation in our facility is about five eighty-three, well above flood plain related issues at this point. So we need that criteria. There's only one regulated recharge area. It's in Peoria County. We need that criteria. Archaeologic and historic sites. We contacted the Illinois Preservation Agency. They determined that there are no significant archaeological or historical sites located within the area of those transfer stations. So we made that basic criteria. Natural areas and endangered species. We have two species of concern in the area. The database, that's the Indian Bluffville Prairie and the Lake Sturgeon. Yeah, Lake Sturgeon. Indian Bluff Prairie is a two and a quarter acre dry prairie approximately a little less than a mile without being to the proposed transfer station. The dry prairie has no back office off our property boundary for sure. And not even within the outside of the building. So the prairie is protected. Lake Sturgeon occupy large freshwater lakes and rivers. We are not adjacent to any large freshwater lake rivers. Our stormwater will be managed using best management practices, which I'll talk about in a little bit. So we meet that. The nearest wild and scenic river is a hundred sixty miles away. So we meet that criteria. Brings us to airports. Due to the proximity of the Quad Cities International Airport, this facility had to take some special precautions. One, it needed to be a totally enclosed transfer station. This facility is a totally enclosed transfer station. Of which I've been permitted numerous totally enclosed transfer stations with the approval of the IPA and the FAA, including one that is contiguous to all here recently. We are going to adopt a bird control plan, which is contained in the application. To and the facility design being totally enclosed with the drive, the tension basin also minimizes the potential for birds. We will have a food medication plan which is in the application. It's proven very successful in others. You also need to be careful for runway protection zones. Showed on slide sixteen are the runway protection zones. Is illustrated on that slide, well over two thousand feet away from runway protections. There's also imaginary surfaces that come off the end of the runway that are in a conical shape. That allows for approaches of planes that are shown here on slide seventeen. Our facility meets the requirement and does not approach on any of those imaginary landing or takeoff zones. We also have to worry about obstructions. Obstruction at our site is shown on. Slide eighteen. We are about a hundred twenty-two feet below the FAA required obstruction. So we're very decent shape there. When it comes to airports, we meet all the requirements. This facility located at this location relative to its proximity to. Post-site improvements. Briefly, it's a fifteen thousand foot transfer station. Seventy-five eighty square foot maintenance facility, twenty-five oh five square foot office. Twenty-eight ninety-four park storage and regular storage and a twenty-nine hundred square foot hydro excavation building. The buildings on this site, and you'll see when we get to the site plan, this site is very open. Very low density on the site. The building coverage on this site is only six and a half percent of the total acreage. We were going through zoning. It would allow that fifty percent building coverage on this ten acre site. So just that calculation tells you a lot about how much room there is, how open it is, and allowed for maneuverability. There's a scale. Scale's automated. Every truck that comes in will be pre-waisted, but tear waves. You receive a ticket from the office. The scale remote system is used at many transfer stations for the last decade. It goes very well. There's fueling station. Citizen drop off for recyclables. Stormwater management system, and I'll talk more about the stormwater system later. All the access drives and interior circulation routes are paved. And you've got screening on forty-seventh street with use of lanes. That's a theory we'll talk about more in a subsequent presentation. Slide twenty has some renderings of the building. I will start up in the upper left-hand corner. There's a couple of takeaways from there. One is. The loading door, the doors that the packer trucks go in and out of are located not towards forty-seventh street, but in the back of the facility. You can also see the, on the roof, and I can see, you can see their air treatment system. Those systems will be located on the roof. Create a negative air pressure within the building. Treatment would be an ozone treatment system, again, which would be deployed successfully at other transfer stations. On the upper right, you see the doors. That the trucks go in and out of. Those are fast-acting doors. They're not like a garage door that you would think of. These are. You haven't been to a transfer station, sometimes you can go to a dealership and see that new car dealers, they open and close in about ten or fifteen seconds. Very high speed light doors. I think it's a good-looking building. It's made of precast concrete using stand-up conventional technology. It's not made of metal. That concrete building will serve for a couple of things. It's a tighter building than metal building. That helps us on our air treatment system. It helps us on our odors, but it's also being concrete suppresses the noise within the facility. Site plan twenty-one. Talk a little bit more about. First, let's talk about the stormwater. Stormwater has been designed to meet the city of Moline's stormwater ordinance. And then even supplement that with the best management practices. In general, the amount of water leaving this facility or the rate at which the water leaves the facility will be less post-development than pre-development. Reduces the potential for flooding downstream. We do that by retaining that water during the twenty-four hour storm. Holding it back for about seventy-two hours and then releasing it slowly when the storm leaves. Stormwater falls on asphalt pavement. It'll flow to the north, sheet flow. There are curb cuts in that northern curb where the water will flow into that ditch up on the top. That ditch is a designed to be a very slow-moving ditch. It's going to reduce the rate at which the water moves through it, allow sediment to settle out. The vegetation within that ditch will take up the nutrients within that water. Will also improve water quality as it moves through that long ditch. Moves over to the west-hand side and there's a dry basin, we call that. It will have water in it during a major storm, but it'll drain out in about three days. Then it's discharged through a stand pipe type system, which goes to a manhole and then eventually. That culvert will take it to a ditch and eventually get to. This slide also shows how we stayed out of the wetland vegetated area in the lower left-hand corner. Our fence stays completely out of that creek wooded area. There are fifteen parking spaces for trucks on the south area that we talked about. Employee parking, we have thirty-seven employee parking areas. We have a citizen drop-off area. Citizen drop-off area is for recyclables only. We'll monitor that and pull that and take the recyclables to a MRF that is in good standing with Lake Shore on a regular basis. There's outdoor lighting that will surround the outdoor. Like the entire facility. The lighting is designed also to be consistent with airport regulations. Not allowing glare to leave the site and to make the lights so they're scrubbing straight down. This is a good example where the, you can see the doors for the transfer station. Away from the entrance, you can also see that we've designed this in a way so that when people drive by and look in the driveways. We shielded the hydro excavation waste behind the facility. We put significant landscaping, which I said, we'll show you in a sub good, that expert will talk about the landscaping. But the buildings were thoughtfully placed. They're placed in a way that allows us plenty of room for turning movements, backing in for storage boxes. That has doors spaced away from the front of the building that puts the hydro excavation building behind the transfer station maintenance building. This really. This, when you design a transfer station or a facility like this, you need all of those pieces to work together in harmony. This is a small transfer station on a large site. This is a luxury. Those transfer stations are much larger. That's two, three thousand tons a day. On facilities that are half, pieces of property that are half the size. This is a small, moderate facility on a very big site, which is going to accommodate everybody. It's very. This shows the floor plan of the transfer station. You'll see an animation in a little bit that shows how this works, but the trucks will come around. They'll start to build. There is a lighting system that identifies which bays are open as the trucks start backing towards the building. There are proximity switch that throw those high-speed doors up. They move in, they clear the door jam. A proximity switch drops the door down. So it really doesn't take any time. Those transfer stations. It's not some guy with a chain and a roll tour pulling it up and down. This is an automated system that's designed for this kind of use. There's plenty of storage for waste. There's plenty of room for packer trucks to come in, plenty of room for the end loader maneuvering the site. Plenty of room for landscape waste and recyclables. There's a calculation analysis within the application that shows the amount of waste storage needed. In a worst-case scenario, we have over twice the amount of storage needed to handle those pieces. Low net waste volume analysis is contained in the applications. A different view of the same thing. Shows the trucks in here and the end loader, plenty of floor space. It's a clear span building. There are no columns to get in the way. Very simplicity of operation. Ample room and the simplicity of the design. And a clear span building makes this a very, very easy building to clean. Talk about it later. Four concrete walls, three concrete walls on the door, but there are no columns in the way, no hidden spaces. This is a very easy to clean building. Another rendering of the tipping floor. You can see that we put some windows up near the top of the wall. Floods that area with natural light. That also helps with safety. It also helps with cleaning. This is a deflector plate shown here on slide twenty-four. So if any waste goes to get kicked off behind the transfer trailer, hits that deflector plate and drops straight in the transfer trailer. Maintenance building is fairly standard. The two bay maintenance building, office and park storage. Not much to talk about there. So rendering in citizens drop off area. Again, sort separated recyclables only. And we'll transfer that out to a vendor to help us either ourselves or someone else that will recycle that material. Slide twenty-seven shows the traffic flow on the site plan. Showing in red, there are the packer trucks or the trucks that pick up the waste at your curb. We have room for up to nine trucks to be stacked between the scale and the roadway. That allows more than enough room to prevent trucks from backing up on the road. There's a stacking analysis within the application that demonstrates that. They then go through the scale, take a left, position themselves in one of the doors that have a green light. Back in, tip, and then exit through the other exit. The transfer trailers that take the waste from the transfer station to the landfill, enter the same north entrance. They can bypass the scale because we already know what they have and we also have a scale pit within here. So they bypass, plenty of room for turning movements. Get loaded, tarped, and exit the facility. All the turning movements on the facility inside and outside all also demonstrated to be safe to a computer program called Auto Turn. So we know, and that's also within the application. There's plenty of turning radiuses on all of that to work. Not shown on here, which I think in retrospect we should have. There should be one more traffic line that shows the citizens coming in, which will enter to the north. Go to, if they're bringing just recyclables, go to the citizen drop off, drop their recyclables, then exit the facility. There will be a spotter that will be on site at all times. Spotter does a couple of things. Controls the site, picks up litter, helps citizens when they come to the drop-off facility. Drop-off facility will have cameras which we can monitor within the office. Everybody's going to be fitted with a radio. So when the person utilizes the drop-off facility, we'll have the spotter walk over there. Help them if they need help. Our experience is that the amount of traffic in at least drop-off facilities is diminished. Sometimes if they're out in a rural area and nobody's watching them, they get a lot of garbage in them. Definitely happen here because we wouldn't be watching the facility. But it does provide recycling. The other truck movement that comes in are the hydro excavation waste. That'll also enter through the north entrance and go to this back building. Where they'll position, unload their waste, which I'll talk about a little bit more. And it'll get solidified and then they leave. So the takeaway from this is we have very good visibility. We have counter clockwise movement trucks. That's the safest. No hidden corners. Excellent room for maneuverings. Sufficient queuing. That was all my safer. Let's see if this works. This is an animation that we did to try and show you how the facility works. This is two scale. Got the packer trucks lining up. There's the ticketing booth. You can see the light standards. It's a hydro excavation truck going in the back. See the lights above the doors. He's gonna position it all green. Turn red when he's in there. Start truck parking along that side of the building. See the air equipment on the roof. equipment on the roof. And all automated. Plenty of room for storage, plenty of room for that end loader to maneuver around, grab its material, unload the transfer trailer that was down in the pit. Employee putting the tarp on the transfer trailer before it exits the facility. I know I went over the design pretty quick. A lot in the application. Sure, I'll give you ask questions if I miss. Uh, operating plan. I've been doing this for forty years. Uh, we wrote the SWANA manual on transfer station design and operations. I taught transfer station design and operation. For Solid Waste Association of North America for uh, this is a result of our expertise in collaborating with LRS and their expertise. Well, this operating plan has been proven and developed over decades of experience. I don't think both of our teams. Hours of operation are from five to six, Saturday, five of one. We close on Sundays and holidays. There may be activity within the facility past regular business hours for cleaning or maintaining equipment, but no wasteful would be seen after those operating. That last load of waste will be typically transferred to the facility by seven P M. If we have a portion of a load or no storm or some kind of extraordinary event, store the waste in a loaded transfer trailer or within the transfer station overnight and it'll be transferred to the landfill first thing the next morning. As mentioned before, we've got five hundred and twenty tons of material, four hundred tons municipal waste, eighty tons of hydro excavation waste, twenty-five tons of split separated recyclables, not to be confused with the drop off facility upside and fifteen tons of landscape. There are many unauthorized wastes. We're going to accept non hazardous municipal solid waste, hydro excavation waste, or separated recyclables and landscapes. Hydro excavation waste is the, is a watery mud that companies are producing when they do directional drilling. Usually see this for type of optic installation or cable installation. Uh, the mixed water jet basically goes in and laterally and breaks up the soil and resulting mixture is a flurry of water and mud, water and soil. Unauthorized waste will not be treated, accepting or disposing of hazards. Period and seven does not apply. Also implement methods to pre-approve our haulers. Waste screening procedures in random load checkings to detect and prevent the acceptance of spulso supply. The first place the waste is vetted or approved is by the hauler itself because uh, usually these are haulers that use this facility every day or several times a day. We monitor their compliance with waste acceptance. Uh, if there's a problem, we either get it corrected or we reduce some service. Waste screening procedures happens really at a curve. It's an opportunity to look at the waste there and reject something if it's visible. It also occurs on the waste transfer station floor as it's tipped and the end loader moves it around. There's an opportunity to inspect waste there. Then we do several load checkings a month. We once we go in, pick a random load, put it aside, go through the waste and see how successful a checking program is. If that demonstrate cases that are not acceptable, we need to change our procedures. Those records will be kept at the transfer station. Other unauthorized race wastes are listed on slide thirty-three. Include regulated hazardous waste, regulated special waste, soiled industrial process waste, sludge, used motor oil, pollution control waste, PCB waste, potentially, potentially infectious medical wastes, liquid waste, universal wastes, asbestos, nuclear material, radioactive waste, transfer attic waste, lead acid batteries and wankos and bulk loads of tires. That's at the transfer station. The hydro excavation waste particularly a little easier to monitor because it's a limited customer that actually uses that. So first, we work with those limited number of customers to come up with a waste profile sheet certification form. This process has worked very successfully for LRS and other facilities in Illinois. They confirm that the waste has been pre-approved and corrected right into the hydro excavation building back. Each load will be visually inspected. It's unloaded to make sure it matches the if discrepancies are found, personal assignment manifests the material people. If there are no discrepancies, material, if it does not conform, we'll load it up and dispose of it appropriately. Uh, wherever that's probably take. The hydro excavation building is shown on slide thirty-five. The elevation on the right shows the middle door, which holds the solidification material, which are wood chips. Could be mulch, something like that. Uh, there's a sprinkler room on the side, so the entire building is also sprinkled. And the solidification pits are on either side. The plan view on the left shows a large apron out front shown in light gray. That's all will be pitched into the building. Each one of these pits are designed to be waterproof through a series of synthetic materials and concrete so that it can hold this liquid mud, if you will. Um, I can't see that. The the truck discharges it load in the pit and then uh, wood material, mulch or whatever is then mixed in that pit with the mud material so that it solidifies to the point that it passes the state paint filter test and is no longer considered a liquid waste. So then loaded in sealed up trucks and taken to the briefly, the record keeping is contained on slide thirty-six. Of various kinds of records, I mean, what we've taken, who it's from, general results of any analysis that we did on the waste, volume of waste that we perceive. Operation plan also addresses some of the things most people are concerned about, litter, odor, pests, noise. There is controlled by making sure that all vehicles that use the facility are completely enclosed. Uh, the facility itself is enclosed, all tipping and all waste handling happens within, within a building. Uh, the facility is patrolled on a constant basis out inside and out as well as down some length down Forty-seventh Street. And along Seventy-eighth from Rock Island Parkway extending to a point fifteen hundred feet east of Forty-seventh. So we stop the litter by making sure everybody has a closed vehicle when they come, check that at the scale house. If that becomes a problem, they don't no longer become a customer. Tip all inside a closed building. We clean the building every night. The facility is constantly patrolled inside and out by spotters. We'll pick up any litter that we find. It's surrounded by a fence to help also contain litter. And we're also coming up on some portions of the roadways near, so. Odors handled by loading and managing the operations within the, within the building. Mentioned earlier, we're going to have a negative air pressure uh, within the building. So if we open those doors, the air will actually flow into the building. Odors won't flow out. Those fans on the roof will then suck up the air within that building. It'll change the air probably about seven or eight times per hour for the entire volume that will go through on a odor treatment system on a growth primarily component there is ozone. Ozone destroys the odors, doesn't mask them. That's also where tipping floor will be cleaned every night. Uh, which means all the garbage will come up and we have a street sweeper as necessary, the street sweep the floor. We have an incoming load that particularly has an odor difference from, answer that out immediately. Infuse service to customers that violate the trusted community hopefully gets it. And it also includes a misting system. A misting system X two uh, is a water based system that also utilizes and odor suppressant that has its own or could be neutral. But misting system works very well in knocking down dust, which I'll talk a little bit about. But also it can be very effective for certain which will be inside. Pests, uh, the, the, the way you solve the pest issue is to get the garbage out of there. Don't leave them any place to feed. You get the garbage out of the facility every night. Uh, pests are no longer a problem because they don't have anything near for them to feed. Still, it's a concrete building, designed building so that doesn't have a lot of extensive landscaping right up against the building. That gives pests a place to harbor. Will also it's uh, employ a professional exterminator who'll inspect the facility on a monthly basis at minimum and more frequently than necessary. Noise at this facility should be de minimis. Uh, all of the major activities have been within a concrete building with closed doors. Noise level outside the transfer station will meet any of the state requirements for some noise. Again, dust looking on inside of a building, sweeping the floors, cleaning the floors, moving the waste, the waste comes in and out, loaded and tarped. Some misting system that would get deployed in certain areas if we get dust. Knock that dust down. Health and safety plan have been developed also, which is contained within the application. Over some basic components. The health and safety plan addresses fire control, preventative measures, accident prevention, spill control and prevention measures, employee training, risk management, operational contingency plan. Fire prevention is a big thing at a facility like this. Uh, you know, had a you'll have a hazard requirement within the building code that will require some sprinkling. Uh, we have municipal water supply to industrial parks. The sprinkling in this facility will not be maybe issue, it'll be a dry pipe system. Which is standard in a building like this. We're also going to deploy the what's called a fire rover system. It uses infrared cameras to observe the transfer station twenty-four hours a day. It's monitored by a control center that's remote. And if the cameras start detecting heat within the transfer station, there are humans that monitor it and can react and direct nozzles to the floor with great precision to knock down that fire uh, almost immediately. It's a very effective system. Uh, but see that we'll have a direct alarm to the fire district. So if there is fire, it'll be notified immediately. Obviously, uh, there'll be fire department that accessing this facility twenty-four hours through the Knox box type system. Fire hydrants locations. We'll show another uh, I don't preliminarily on the site plan. Uh, we will, as we go through the building department, you know, permitting process where the fire department to finalize the locations of those fire hydrants. All mobile equipment, have fire extinguishers. You know, the nice thing about this building is accessible from all sides. The fire department can get in around this facility easily. It's payed on all sides. Concrete. I have heat shields on the bottom of the off equipment on the case any waste gets in contact with the exhaust equipment. Those are standard things for the types of catapult and machines that work in this department. Now this is the emergency phone. And a base location. Slide number forty-seven shows a little bit about the fire suppression plan. There is one thing here we should add. There should be another S for dry pipe sprinkler mechanical systems that go right in this little bump out on the hydro excavation waste like we have here. Fire hydrants are located in the four corners will adjust those if the fire department wishes. Talk about the fire. Still control and prevention measures. All, all site rolling stack will be inspected daily or prior to use to assess the integrity of the fuel tanks and hydraulic hoses. There'll be an S P C C plan, a spill prevention and control counter measures plan that will be developed. Agents will be required to be turned off during fueling operations. Fueling operations will always be observed so as to immediately cease feeling, not going to be allowed to fuel without the right of standing there present on this phone. Emergency shut off valves will be present on all the fuel pump stop. The on-site storage tank will have all the required secondary containment spill. Emergency spill kit will be located near there as well as in the transfer station. Minor spills can be also have an emergency response contractor on call. So if there's a larger spill of some kind, immediately get a special specialty contractor out short. Employee training includes operational procedures, health and safety, lockout, tag out, fire control and prevention, urgency first aid, detection, identification and handling of any authorized waste as well as emergency bad waste. Want me to just go through these now? Based on my education, training and experience and the evidence contained in the application, I believe this facility is so designed, located and proposed to be operated that the public health, safety are will be protected. It is my opinion that the facility is located outside the boundary of one hundred year flood plain. It is my opinion of plan of operations for this facility is designed to minimize the danger to the strong area fire spills or other operational accidents. The facility will not be treating, storing or disposing of hazardous wastes. Facility will not be located in a regularly charged shape that takes a little bit of pressure. So yeah.
Yes, with a few questions. Can you hear me okay?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lewis, you answered a few cities sitting with us questions during the question, would you say a few?
Follow up question. I think she's had some.
We just couldn't tell yet, like it was just too quick to know, so I think you're okay, but I'll. Okay, just let me know. I'll give you a look. Okay, couple of questions on the citizen convenience area. Would you be able to pull up that the drop maybe a safe plane? I think it was twenty one maybe. Um. Here we go, so we got the citizen convenience area down here in the corner. And you had testified that the purpose was to drop off recyclables only.
Yes.
Because I think there's a, it it conflicts a little bit with what with what the application says, it's on page. Two point three dash four. It says select wastes and recyclable materials.
It's just recycled.
Just recycled materials. Okay. So somebody cannot be dropping off like. Landscape waste if they went out and cut their lawn.
We're talking about the types of materials that you'd normally put in your toaster or I'm sorry cart. Uh, plastic newspapers, glass.
Okay, you're not dropping off a TV.
No.
Or paint.
No.
Or something like. Okay.
And there'll be. There'll be a lot of signage there that'll dictate that. Each bin will actually identify what's allowable in that material. Because we're having under video surveillance, it's not open during off hours, so we have constant eyes on that.
Yeah, that was a question we had, you had mentioned that there's going to be like a spotter.
Right.
So when. And that there would be like a camera monitoring, now how would they have, so somebody comes in. I know you had said it, there was, it wasn't on the track.
They would enter, yeah, they would enter the north driveway. There'd be signage that would direct them where this is at, they'd go across the front of the building. Uh, and stop at this location, referring to the citizens convenience area. We would see that on a camera monitor, the dispatcher in the office would then. Alert the spotter that somebody's at citizens uh convenience center and wherever that spotter was. Right, uh, you know. Give that uh cover for assistance.
Okay, so that is a live feed?
Yes.
And somebody's monitoring that at all times?
Yes.
Okay, and you said there's going to be signage, so a car would know where to go?
Yeah.
Okay, there's gonna be sites, will there, will there be striping?
Uh, we had not anticipated scraping, no.
No, but you.
But we would have a sign near the entrance saying citizens convenience to the left. There'll be signs over here of what's acceptable and and what's not. And they're actually partitioned bin, each bin will show you what you can put in each one.
Okay, you had testified that you thought that the anticipated the number of. Personal vehicles using that would be like the minimums.
Yeah.
So what what would that? Did you estimate what that would be?
Uh, I put it in, no, my estimate is less than six per ton a day.
Such a ten day, but they're going to be using the same entrance as transfer trailers, the garbage trucks. So we don't want those people going to the back.
Uh, we don't, but again, there's a lot of room on this site. Uh, and I think those people that use that type of a. Facility get trained after the first time they come.
Mm hmm.
And it's usually, to be honest, be the the same people that come over.
Oh, it is, interesting, okay. Um, you know, if if the city staff recommended a condition that uh. You mentioned there would be signage directing people, LRS would agree to that.
Yes.
And that LRS, would LRS agree that? Personal vehicles accessing the convenience center would not be permitted. To go to the back of the building.
Yes.
So they would not be mixing in with.
Not.
For them not to do that, correct? Um. You said signage. It's stripe would strike, you you said stripping would not be necessary?
I, you know, I I think. I mean, we can put it down and I I think it might even be confusing.
It might be confusing, okay. Perfect. Um. And you said. Okay, oh, for the. Electronics, household hazardous waste, where 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 do residents drop that up? This is, if this isn't the location.
So we would, that would be a site plan that would be developed in capital city and contractor that does it. Uh, if we did it on a Saturday, uh, probably a good way is to cone off a portion of the facility. Depending on how many cars you get. Uh, and handle that along the south side here. Um. It might, and in way this works, people show up with a uh. Trunk full of a computer and a TV and stuff like that, they're directed uh precisely with coneage. Because it's a, these can be fairly large vents.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and then their stations, people can not normally get. In the right spot. And they. Down towards the top on that southern exit. That would really depend on coordination with the city and the contractor. Because usually that's handled by a outside contractor. What we're offering is our sites, we have a place to do it, we have a trained staff. We have the emergency response plans, uh, if. We've got a, it's a good facility to hold those types of events, it also. When you have the recycling drop off here, uh, you have the recycling, uh, the transfer station here. Got, uh, you started creating a community hub. These types of activities, so people know. That's our, that's our waste recycling hub as opposed to. A bin or a roll off in the back of shopping center.
Um. Just one second. Okay, um, moving on to that fueling station. Which is shown down here on the left hand corner. That is. In proximity to the wetlands. Right there, the fueling station. You had mentioned that there's going to be a spill kit. At the transfer station, I think you might have mentioned going to be also by.
So there's a couple of things that I, I apologize for trying to get through it quickly. Two one thousand gallon tanks.
Right.
They're going to be uh contained within a. Secondary containment facility, uh, concrete walls and bunkers that will, if for some reason they ruptured. Will retain all of the gasoline within that area. We've also uh changed the curb through this area. And made it a fourteen inch high curb, so if somebody splashes as they're filling. That curb will act as a barrier between the grass, also all of the stormwater in that area. Doesn't flow that way, it all flows this way away. Gives us a lot of time to put down absorbent materials, uh, absorbent socks or other materials if something happens.
And so will there be a spill kit?
Yes.
By the fueling station?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Are there like two spill kits or?
I don't, I think it can just be one.
This one?
Regulations that will require that, but I.
And it'll be at that location. Um, so if the city staff recommended a condition that the spill kit be kept at the fueling station. Would LRS agree to that?
Yes.
Um, moving, you know what, I do have a follow up question as you were talking about that stormwater. Um. You had mentioned this earlier in your testimony and you just mentioned the second go that that. That the, it's going to drain to the north. And there the curb. Those recessed curb inlets right there as shown on the on the site plan. And so stormwater is going to flow from those curb inlets. To the dry basin, correct?
Yeah, there it's going to flow down or laser pointer doesn't work on this.
Yeah, sorry, so I'm pointing to.
Those little black boxes on the north are cuts in the curb. They'll flow from the curb down into that bioswale, which is in dark green. So it'll, it'll enter at six or seven points along the north. Get in that bioswale where it'll move very slowly. Through that northern, hold that northern reach, and the reason we like to do that is the slower it goes, the more silt. We get to drop out. If he has more residence time with the vegetation that will be in there that will, and that vegetation will design also to slow down the rate. Slow down erosion, allow more sedimentation, and the vegetation will also take nutrients and stuff out. So clean the, it'll, it'll clean the waters it moves through.
Okay, then it'll eventually end up in the dry basin.
Correct.
And uh. And then it says it discharges to this, the Case Creek via a Y four outlet structure, I don't know if you had mentioned that.
I didn't.
You kind of pointed to it, there's a.
Kind of outside, I can talk about that, there's a drop structure. That's identified in the lower left hand corner of this, it was outside of the fence, so I didn't fuck about it much, but we can talk about it.
Right here, correct?
Well, there's, there's a stand pipe here in the.
Stand pipe.
It's a stand pipe within the basin, which is a. Pipe with holes in it, and it's designed so when the water comes up, the holes are sized to limit the amount of water that goes out. Uh, it then flows through that culvert, we're going to have to replace that, um. Put a drop structure and replace that uh old pipe that's offsite.
Okay, is there a um. A control feature? To to stop the discharge water if you needed to, like some kind of valve, like let's say there was some kind of accident. Maybe a, you know, a truck. Fell over or something, it ended up, is 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 there some type of control feature?
No, I didn't, I didn't propose one.
You didn't have a proposal, would that be? It, what was the reason you didn't propose one?
Just because the time that it takes for water to traverse that pavement, get into that bioswale, work gets whatever. Over the dry detention basin, it just seems like a lot of time there. Plenty of time to reactivate mine, but I mean, if the city feels strong, we can put a shut off valve.
Yes, so if, I think the city would think that an additional valve for some other kind of control.
Yeah.
For a shut off.
On the outlet.
Just as, just an additional safety if there was some type of unpermitted discharge.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Thank you. Okay, I um, so I move on to the hydro excavation solidification process. The the. The application talked about the different types of solidification material that would be mixed, uh, when they were following. Um, kind of were talking wood shifts, oil, sand, oil dried. Um, sawdust, kitty litter, corn cubs, they were all mentioned. Okay.
The corn cubs are dried this year.
Yeah, they have, you weren't. Um, they're all lightweight materials susceptible to being windblown, correct?
Um, they're going to be stored in a building though.
Okay, well, that that's our question.
Yeah.
It's not going to be stored outside?
No.
Okay. That was our question, I noticed that there on one of your drawings, I think it was drawing eight, there was a notation for a solidification material storage area. Wanted, we just wanted to confirm that it was all going to be stored indoors.
It's gonna, it'll be stored indoors. The reason we have a large variety of materials. We don't, and we want to be able to have flexibility to get something on a regular, quickly, quick basis, so. I mean, right now, it's pretty easy to go get a model, go anywhere and pick up a something. In the winter, that might not be available. Or different weather. Uh, but we wanted a variety because we want to be able to uh replenish that material quick.
Okay, yeah, the concern was that it would be, make sure it was stored indoors.
Yes.
The control dust, track out, things like that. Um, the, the the building itself, the the plan is that there is going to be two mixing pits. I think it was drawn, one, I know it was on one of your drawings, drawing eight. There's two mixing pits in the building and the pit floor is constructed of concrete, correct?
Yes.
And just as, just as a general matter, concrete susceptible cracking.
Yes.
Yes, and um. And here you're, you're mixing some liquid waste, you're solidifying it, so there's. You know, there's a potential for liquid waste to leak through a crack. And so in the event of that, you've got a design underneath where there's going to be a geomembrane. Correct? I think on top of a stone, maybe there was a different grind that shows it. So you've got the concrete, the geomembrane, and then the stone.
Yeah.
Correct? Um. So the the geomembrane really provides another layer of protection in case there's any kind of leak.
Yes.
True. And depending on the size of the stone. Isn't it possible that the stone could puncture the geomembrane?
Uh, you have to size the stone with the geomembrane or you have to. Uh, put up the bow cushion down, that's part of the design process. And I should also mention, it's concrete here, it's designed. Uh, for its anticipated use, I think the drawings indicate that we're going to be using water stops at all the joints, which are embedded. Uh. Plastic materials, so any joint is actually got another income build of layer in it. Will also soft cut joints to control the cracking, we want to. To go at those uh locations, uh, water stops will be. That's just part of what I would be considering for final design issues.
For final design, because you had mentioned either, you either. Um. Either review the size of the stone, make sure you have the correct size of the stone, or you can use a geotextile material.
Correct.
Or choose some type of gel, have you, have you done, and I know you can also do a geomembrane puncture calculation.
Yes.
Correct? Is that something you've done?
It's not, not for this.
Do you plan on doing it for this?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Um, so the city's recommended a condition requiring LRS to perform a geomembrane fracture analysis. And to implement the results in the final design, would LRS agree to that?
Of course.
Perfect, thank you. Um. Okay, moving on, just another question, sorry, about your stormwater management. Application to the page two point three dash five. Kind of very general statement, it's that. Prior to development of a transfer station. The demonstration will be made to the city of Moline. That the proposed development will function in accordance with the city of Moline's stormwater ordinance. And authorization will be obtained. So the question is. When, when do you plan on making that demonstration?
Uh, building permit process.
Building permit process, okay. And you'll commit to the city that that's.
The demonstration, I think the demonstration is actually in the application now. Uh, but the city has the ability or has the. Responsibility to review that and a, like, they're experts in building, are. We've sized this in accordance with the ordinance, in fact, we think we exceed the ordinance.
Yeah, you know, typically you would see this during zoning, since we don't have zoning.
It's in.
Yeah, there's a question about timing.
Probably three hundred pages of calculations on stormwater.
Okay, the demonstration will be made in in conjunction with the building permit application.
I believe the demonstration's been made.
It's been made.
Well, we'll, we have to resubmit that during building. Uh, permitting process.
Okay. All right. Um. And uh, moving along about the building permit application, you had mentioned this really early in your presentation about how this is, the application is. This is just reciting that there's more to come. You know, there's going to be the building permit application, IT application, and part, as part of that building permit application, there's going to be a um, a structural engineer. That is going to work on additional drawings, calculations, correct? And um. With that structural engineer, uh, when they do the final design of the footfalls. Include the unique loads that are associated with this type of facility, the pushing against the wall.
Yes, that'll be done. And what we have shown there in the concept is footwalls that were designed by a structural engineer at other sites. That have been deemed acceptable.
Okay. All right, um. Couple other, um, couple more, couple more questions. Um, that your odor control system, so you went over that briefly. The application includes and describes the odor control design. The operational features that'll be incorporated in the facility to control potential odors, correct?
Yes.
And uh, these are measures that LRS is committing to the city of Moline. That it's going to implement as part of this transfer station.
Yes.
Correct. And will LRS also uh agree to include these features in its IUK permit application?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, similar comment with your little litter control plan.
My little control?
Litter, litter, litter patrol, control again. You've got a litter control plan that's going to be implemented at the facility. Prevents really litter from escaping the building and leaving the site. And uh, one of them is that LRS was going to diligently control, remove litter from the sites. And then you had a. And then you had an area forty seventh street, course finding right away along seventy eighth avenue from Rock Island. Uh. I'm going to pronounce it wrong. Milan.
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 Well, my daughter was just in Milan, so. Parkway, course course finding right away and extending the sense to a point fifteen hundred feet east of forty seventh streets.
Yes.
Yes, and that's a commitment that you've made to the city that you're going to implement. And will LRS also agree to put that in this I E P A permit application?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, same question on dust and mud track out. For the application, you described the procedures LRS is going to implement to address dust and mud from being tracked out onto the public roads. It is said within a quarter mile from the facility.
Yes.
And the application says you're going to remove the mud, the dirt, the dust from the public roads. Uh, on an on need, as needed day. Day, correct?
Yes.
And um, again, this LRS is committing to the city that it's going to implement that plan.
Yes.
And will LRS agree?
I just still want to clear whether so there is no, everything's paved, so there shouldn't be any but.
Correct. Uh, but you are committing though to.
Okay, I just didn't want the audience to.
To think that they're going to. Uh, that you will, will LRS agree to that in your I E P A permanent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, just a couple more questions. The application stated that LRS is going to like correct.
Yes, I think that's part of the host.
It might, it might have been a no. It's definitely in the application. It's on page two point four dash seventeen.
Okay.
And it also said that they would develop a dedicated webpage for the facility that would also include this phone number.
Yes.
Would, will LRS also include an email address? If people can you, I know a lot of people just use email these days. And LRS will, you know, monitor that.
Yes.
Regularly, daily, you get back to people?
Yes.
Thank you. Um. Got one more question for you. You had talked or also. You think? One second, just. We have no further questions.
Merchant?
I do. Do you want me to launch in with five minutes left?
Maybe you want.
Probably more than five.
Okay.
And uh. I have some questions. Um. Mr. Moose, can you elaborate on the operation that hydro excavation waste in terms of odor control and processing and solidification?
So the hydro waste doesn't have, it's just dirt with water. So.
So there's no odor.
Doesn't have, not a, not a no gift person.
Okay. Um. The host agreement contemplated place that the consumer electronics recycling uh. Operation would be a permanent feature in the site. Can LRS uh verify that that is in fact still a part of their plan?
I cannot. I don't recall that that's a permanent part of the plan and I don't recall that.
Subsection ninety of the host agreement, page ten discusses it being a permanent operation.
I'll redo it tonight and be able to answer it tomorrow.
Mr. Leraf just said it is a permanent part of it.
Okay.
Very good. Uh, the city is going to be adopting the twenty twenty one international building code. Are the fine plans for the buildings on the property, do they meet those standards or can they be adapted, readily adapted to those standards?
Wait, that's the code that you have. Uh, it's usually come in as a. Barely hide uh restrictions on fire control and so forth. So. Yeah, thank you. Whatever your building.
Okay, so we'll um, start tomorrow with the. Protection evaluation from UFO of this. And Mr. Mueller, are you intending to put on a witness for three and six?
Could I inquire? Without asking for a commitment, how long you think you cross the strip rule suite? Uh, so we're not talking about all day. In that case, I didn't even finish tomorrow because. Our remaining three witnesses are probably an hour, an hour and fifteen minutes of direct examination, including the three of them.
Okay.
Now we can start with criteria and three tomorrow.
Will the city be, will the city be planning witnesses?
I don't believe so.
What about this methodology?
We'll just have the one and. I don't have absolutely.
Okay, sounds like I'm going to conclude with the with the evidence by tomorrow afternoon sometime. Which means that we will have public comment or public comment tomorrow afternoon, starting tomorrow afternoon, south far goes. Um, and we could easily conclude this, I I tomorrow evening five o'clock.
Will that information on on public comment, will that be posted on the city's website? How do people know?
Well, this is being live streamed so they can.
Okay.
All that.
Yeah.
Put that on the city's website.
Just for clarification, there is a link on the website for public comment.
Yeah. Well, anybody can file written public comment. This is people who want to action. That will. We'll attempt to until tomorrow morning at that AM.
Thank you.